I'm calling the Amherst County School Board meeting to order. This is July 14, 2022. We will take a moment to stand, have a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody, and the first thing we need is an approval of tonight's agenda.
Madam Chairman, I move to approve tonight's agenda.
All right, I have a motion. Miss Justice, I need a second.
Second.
I have a second by Mrs. Berg. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have an agenda. The next thing that we have are public comments. If there's anyone that we have tonight, do we have anybody signed up? Anybody in the audience? Okay, seeing none, we will close public comment. Next on the agenda is health insurance presentation.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, members of the board, we have with us Mr. Matt Smith of Corporate Benefit Consultants, who's going to give us a presentation regarding our insurance options and the possibility of going self-insured. Mrs. Smith?
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm Matt Smith, Corporate Benefit Consultants. To the opportunity to come and talk to you a little bit about health insurance and dental insurance and self-funding. So we're going to be focused on the 2022-23 renewal that will be coming up in October. So in terms of the topics... I'll get it right. I will talk about financing options primarily. We'll talk a little bit about self-funding. Talk some about health reimbursement accounts, because I've heard that has come up before. A little bit about the dental plan in place, and then I'll answer any questions. You're welcome to ask questions anytime during the presentation. So in terms of financing options, the fully insured renewal from Anthem with the current plans that are in place is at 17.64%. Up until last year, you were fully insured with Anthem. Last year, you moved to what's called Anthem balanced funding. It's a sort of a small step into a self-funded environment. The renewal for that came in at 19.37%. And then we've gotten quotes for a full self-funded quote with what's called $150,000 stop loss. So that's the protection level that you would have within that plan if any member of the plan had more than $150,000 in claims. That's what primarily protects you from things going totally haywire. And then you also add what's called 115% aggregate. And what that means is if we expect claims to be X for the plan year, if they go more than 15% above that, then you're re-insured and you're protected at that level. So you don't want to mistake what I'm talking about with when people say self-insured, that they're virtually taking all the risk. We're self-funded, but we are taking pieces of the risk and putting it off so that you're protected at certain levels. The expected cost under the self-funded plan that we're talking about is an increase of 5.92% to your current cost. The maximum cost, 28.58, that's if you were to leave after one year, and we can talk a little bit about that, but that's not really something that comes into play in terms of the financing and how we go forward. And then the adjusted maximum cost, which would include the first year at what's called an immature level, since when we, if we move to self-funding on October 1st, the claims that come in from the prior plan year are covered under that balanced funding arrangement. So the first year ends up being immature, and then you have runout that you fund for. So the adjusted maximum cost with an adjustment for the runout would be 22.19%. So in terms of your group, we're going to make a recommendation that self-funding really for you is what makes the most sense. Some of the reasons are, under a self-funded plan, you have total flexibility in terms of plan design. Now, there's no plan designs we're talking about this year, but going down the road. As a fully insured plan, you basically have to have plans that are... that the Virginia Bureau of Insurance approves. So you have a limited availability of plans that you could get from Anthem, for instance. Under a self-funded plan, you can change and tweak little pieces of that plan pretty much any way you want. So you get much greater flexibility. This won't come into play with you, but it's also a provision that saves some people money. So the state periodically, almost every year, they come out with some mandates in terms of what you have to have in your health insurance. They only apply to fully insured plans. Your plan, since it's been fully insured, covers all the state mandates. All the groups that I deal with are either schools, or municipalities, or cities. They pretty much always follow the state mandates. They don't want to sort of be left out there saying, well, we're not going to do that because, you know, we want to save money. However, there are some programs available, particularly with specialty RX through Anthem, where we can save some money, will not cost the employees any money, but will save the employer money in terms of cost, that you cannot do if you have a fully insured plan. And I'll give you just the gist of it. Basically, specialty drugs are through the roof in terms of cost. I mean, it's not unlikely that you don't see some of these scripts, $10,000, $15,000. Your copays are relatively low compared to the actual cost. A lot of the manufacturers make coupons available. But up until now, if you didn't have a program like we're going to talk about, the coupon is only good for the copay that the employee would pay. So the employee might have $100 copay for a $10,000 drug, let's say. They would get a coupon, they would pay nothing. The coupon would only be worth $100, and the group basically pays the rest. Under the specialty program that we're proposing, they will actually maximize the value of the coupon. So the employee who was paying zero would still pay zero. But that coupon wouldn't be for $100, it would be for the maximum value that they can get for that coupon. And then the second piece of the specialty savings is up until now, and I, you know, I would claim that this is probably a glitch, but maybe not. When people use coupons, they were getting credit for the coupon value towards their out-of-pocket. So even though they weren't actually spending money, they were getting, they were getting extra protection because of that coupon. So that, that would go away also. So not a big deal necessarily, because they weren't paying the money anyhow. But when you put those two, two pieces together, under a self-funded plan, we would expect that to save you about 1.76%. In terms of other savings, you have improved cash flow. Now, that's not as big as it used to be, you know, back when I started a long time ago. Interest rates were 10% and 15%. Under your fully insured plan, you're basically prepaying your claims by a month or a month and a half. Under a self-funded plan, you're paying them after they're paid. So you'd have a month and a half, two months of basically money that could earn interest. Interest rates have gone up recently, so it's, it helps a little, but it doesn't help nearly as much as it used to. But it would, it's still, you're still paying your claims after the fact instead of ahead of time. You have lower fixed costs, administration typically. And I took this off the most recent renewal from Anthem for Amherst Schools. There was a 2021 renewal. We have a 2022 renewal, but they will not give us all the details that I needed. So I based it on one that was a year old, but you could expect these numbers to be very close going forward. Administration would be about 1.3% lower. Because the fully insured plan, you have no risk theoretically, and Anthem has taken, in this case, Anthem taken all that risk. That risk fee is 2.5%, that would go away under a self-funded plan. And another big piece is the state premium tax. So if you have a fully insured plan, state premium tax on insurance policies is 2.25%. If you have a fully insured plan, you're paying 2.25% on the entire premium. Under a self-funded plan, the only insurance aspect of the plan is the reinsurance. The reinsurance costs are approximately 10% to 12% of the cost of the plan. So now you're already paying 2.25 on something that's roughly 10% or 12%. As a result, you can save about 1.9% in terms of premium tax under a self-funded plan. So when you put all those together, you're going to save roughly 7.3% in terms of just fixed real cost. So what's the catch? Well, it is a self-funded plan, and nobody's going to self-fund you at 100%. You're going to have to take some risks. The risk is that 15% margin we talked about. So what I did, I went back and looked at your experience for the last three plan years that have ended. So 2018 through 2021. Your average experience in terms of claims was 1.6% above expected. I'm used to seeing, when I look over a period like that, typically it's 1% or 2% below expected, because the insurance company is sort of always padding their bets, so to speak. So it was a little unusual, but the last couple of years, you know, with everything that's been going on, have been a little harder to predict. Could be COVID-related, it could be something else. But in any event, it was only 1.6% above expected. Under this model of the self-funded plan that we're talking about, your claims would have to go almost 10% above expected for you to break even with the fully insured plan. So as long as your claims came in at 10% above expected or below, your cost would be less than or equal to, at the worst-case scenario, the fully insured plan. If your claims came in higher, let's say, for instance, 115%, then obviously the cost would be a little bit higher. But as I say, over the last three years, they've averaged 1.6% over the three years. It was 7.4% above expected in 1819. It was 1.8% above expected in 1920, and it was 3.5% below expected in 2021. So before I go on, if anybody has any questions about self-funding... So we were going to talk a little bit about health reimbursement accounts. So this is considered a consumer-driven plan, like a FSA or an HSA. It's an employer-only plan, so it's only, it's owned by the employer, unlike an FSA that's owned by the employee, or an HSA that's owned by the employee. So only contributions that can go in are employer money, no limits to how much they could put in. There's no requirement that you have a high deductible plan like you would with an HSA. There's no interest-bearing account like you would have with an HSA. Possibly additional administration, depending on how you structure the HRA. And in most cases, what I have found is it's really a vehicle that groups that are typically smaller than you and fully insured use as a first step into self-funding. So they're fully insured, and what they do is they, they move their deductibles up. They, they reduce the fully insured premium. They take that money and they put it aside so they can basically make up the difference for their employees in terms of that deductible. In terms of Amherst County Public Schools, if we move to a self-funded plan, the, the beauty of the HRA sort of really goes away, because you're not, you don't have leverage in terms of a fully insured plan where, for whatever reason, you might save more money than you expect to pay on that deductible, because under the self-funded plan, we're going to pay the claims. So I'm going to suggest to you, if, if you agree with the recommendation to go self-funded, that the HRA probably doesn't have a place at this point. Because the money that you would, if you upped the deductible and then had a separate account to pay for it, it's basically what you're doing anyhow through the self-funded plan. Does that make, make sense? Real key is, you know, what are, you know, what are your objective and goals? You know, what do you want to accomplish by the HRA? And I don't know that answer right off the bat. We can look at it further if we decide to go a different route. But I would suggest it makes more sense with the fully insured, and I, you know, based on the finances and how a self-funded plan would work. You know, the fully insured plan really doesn't make sense for, for a group your size. I think the latest numbers I saw, roughly 82% of plans 500 and above, and you're right, at that level are, are self-funded at this point. So the last thing I wanted to talk about was the dental plan that's fully insured with Anthem. The expected fully insured cost, $304,800 for next plan year. We looked at self-funding that also. Under a self-funded plan, we would expect the cost to be 240, about $242,000, which would be a savings of about 20% or $62,000. So a further recommendation we would make would be to self-fund the dental plan. Unlike the medical, that you protect yourself with reinsurance at different levels, dental has, you know, maximums that are relatively low. It's not an enormous amount of exposure, so you don't use reinsurance under that, but it's very predictable. Based on my experience with self-funded dental plans, sometimes you can go years without even raising the rates, because it's just, it's very predictable. So I'm glad, glad to answer any questions you folks have.
I have one.
Sure.
It's evident by your recommendation and your numbers that self-funding is the way that you feel we can save money.
Correct.
The plan, from an employee's perspective, is it the same plan for them as far as, you know, the deductibles go? Like a comparative analysis between our self-funded plan and, not the fully plan, but what is it? We...
The ABF plan?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a great question.
How do they compare?
So to your employees, unless you actually tell them that you're going to self-fund, they're going to absolutely notice no difference whatsoever. The plans that we're looking at are identical to your current plans. Card you get from Anthem's the same, the network's the same, virtually every aspect's the same. I do encourage the group to inform their folks that the plan is self-funded, because what you find typically, if employees have a self-funded plan compared to a fully insured plan, there's a little bit more ownership, maybe, it's not a dramatic, but you know, maybe better, slightly better decisions may be being made as opposed to, oh, it's, it's the big bad Anthem, and I'm not going to worry about, I'm going to do whatever I can to get my maximum value out of it. So typically, self-funded plans trend not dramatically lower than fully insured, but slightly lower.
Okay, thank you. And last question, as far as administering it, do we do that here locally? And is, or is that something that you still administer, and we just pay for that?
So Anthem would still be the administrator. So they would operate as a TPA. It's fully integrated with the reinsurance, as opposed to, you might hear groups that have a TPA, and then they go out and get separate reinsurance, where you have to coordinate claims back and forth. So Anthem basically offers a fully packaged product. It would be slightly different than what you're currently used to, because all you're doing now is paying monthly premium based on enrollment. You would have monthly, you'd have a bill that comes monthly for your reinsurance charges based on enrollment and your fixed costs. And then weekly, you would have a debit set up to pay for claims that were paid in the prior week. So that would still all be done elsewhere. It would be slightly different from the administrative end, but it would not be, no reason to think it would be significantly more work at your end to handle that.
Okay, thank you.
Quick question.
Sure.
For the increase in cost every year that we've been seeing, are, are employees still going to be getting hit with that?
I'm not sure that's a question I can answer.
For, for this current, for this current year, the board, we, we, in the budget, we were not passing any of those costs on to the employees. It was all being absorbed within the budget. I mean, every year when we go through the budget process, that's something that the board will look at to see what the employee, employer rates are going to be.
But with, if we go with being our own insurance and doing that, are we still going to have the increase every year that we see, like, sticking with Anthem?
Well, that's a good, good question. So here's the way I would put it to you. So when we start off, and let's call it ground zero, when we start, and if we come in and expect it, you're going to have a dramatic savings compared to the fully insured plan. Going forward, you're going to still have trend lines. That, that's one of the, the things that I think just gets sort of lost in translation. You know, if you ask Anthem, or Cigna, or ADN, or whoever, you know, what are your trend lines? You, when you look at medical, roughly 8% to 8.5%, pharmacy 11%. You put them together, you're roughly at 10%. So people say to me, I'm running an expected, can I just budget flat next year? I said, no, you can't do that, because you've got a trend line of about 10%. Now, based on your last two years, your experience was actually pretty good. This current year is not running that well, but it's still kind of too early to tell. But when I look back over the last two completed years, the last year was up roughly 7% or 8%, and the prior year was actually down a little bit. So over a three-year period, your trend lines are actually... So over a three-year period, your trend lines are actually pretty good. But once you reset and get that savings of roughly, let's call it 10%, you know, you're back on that trend line that you still have to deal with. So it's not going to make that go away by any means. It might be a little better than a fully insured though going forward.
And is there any way we could implement some type of benefit card for our employees to help them pay down those deductibles?
I mean, you could certainly do that. That's entirely up to you.
Yeah, I think the benefit card is what is addressed with a HRA plan.
Here's Mr. Gaff.
Wait.
I was like, where is that coming from?
Sorry, I take the mic. I believe this is the third year, if I'm not mistaken, that there'll be a 0.1% increase for employees, but I think the question is, we don't want to have to keep any increases as the mission to make sure that happens. And I think that, again, like I think as Mr. Smith was saying, if it runs as expected or not much over as expected, we ought to realize pretty substantial savings that will help us, you know, improve the funding to actually maybe even lower costs at some point for employees or at least keep them from going up.
Right. Yeah, so I'm not exactly sure what the issue is, but you might want to look at, look like this at it. So if you feel like the deductibles are too high, it may make more sense than setting up an additional program that requires an additional administrator, additional filings and all that goes along with that to either do one of two things. Adjust your plan accordingly. Since you're going to, since you're self-funded, you're going to pay the claims. Instead of having somebody else in the middle doing something else, you could effectively do the same thing by lowering your deductible. Comes with the cost, that's the real thing. If you've gone three years without raising costs, that's admirable. You know, it's very hard to do in a 10% trend environment. You can't, nobody can do that indefinitely unless they have, you know, unlimited resources, basically. So one way would be to change the deductible. You do have three different plans you offer people, so you have people that can choose lower deductible plans, so they do have that option. Another option would be to maybe promote the HSA more. So even though the HSA has that high deductible, you contribute money that basically offsets the first dollar cost. A lot of times when I look at HSAs and high deductible plans, roughly 80% of the members that are on that plan don't spend the amount of money that the employer puts into the plan. Now, I cannot say for you whether that's the case or not, but we can look at that. But it's really the 20% that are driving the cost of the plan that that comes into play. A lot of your folks that don't have a lot going on, but still have the deductibles and co-pays to deal with, might be better off under a high deductible plan where your contributed money, and they could use that money to offset the first dollar cost.
That's what I was talking about, using that with like a benefit card to actually help our employees.
Right, yeah, that's exactly what that.
And if they don't use it, it can stay on that card and roll over to the next year, but it's still there for our staff that need it.
Correct. And that's why I personally think an HSA makes more sense than an HRA because an HRA, even though they call it consumer-driven, it's not my money, it's the employer money. You could let some roll over, but it's never my money. If I want people to change the way they behave, maybe make more cost-effective healthcare decisions, whether it be, you know, going to an outpatient place as opposed to inpatient, or trying a generic drug before I go to the high-cost drug, they got to feel it in their pocket. So with the, with the HSA, that's their money, and if they save it, they keep it, and it's always their money. So I think that's a much better way to get people to think differently and possibly save money going forward.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
And it's my understanding that if, we won't be getting to the battle of year with Anthem over, this year's a 10%, 15% increase, but next year, we won't know until April if there's going to be a 25% increase. We kind of set these terms ourselves if we go self, if we go self, correct?
Correct. So, yeah, one of the things that, I was a little surprised, you get your renewals really early. So when I got those renewals from Anthem to look at for October of '22, they cut the experience off in October of '21. So you're almost two years out, you know, a year and a half out on the average from, or two years out when you look at the midpoint from the experience period to the midpoint of the, of the actual plan year. So even if you're running well, if they're telling you the trend's 10%, that's going to, that's just going to build that number up that much more. So I personally don't like the idea of doing it that far out, and I think it's much better to get six months of the current plan year under your belt. But you're exactly right, under a self-funded plan, we can pretty much predict the cost and very close to the fixed, maybe not exactly what Anthem might present or another carrier, but we can predict within the margin that you could safely budget for, for the next plan without actually ever having a renewal in your hand. I sense another question.
Well, I have one. Sometimes you hesitate because it might be a stupid question. I noticed on the dental, you have a total savings of about $62,000.
Right.
For the dental, if we go self-insured. Is there a savings that we would realize if we do self-insured for the healthcare? I'm looking at numbers, but it's sort of not making sense.
Okay, no, I was speaking percentages instead of numbers when I was looking at the, at the self-funded. So if we come in and expect it under the self-funded plan, I would expect when you make an adjustment, because this first year is immature, so a few of the costs are a little lower than you normally pay, but that's, that's a one-year shot, so I don't look at it that way. I say, let's, let's talk what a mature year would look like. But I take the numbers and mature them so that when you get your renewal, that's sort of the level you could expect them at. I'd expecting the savings if you come in and expect it under that self-funded plan compared to the fully insured at about a half a million dollars.
Thank you. Questions, Dr. Wells? I'm assuming that the savings would roll into the pot that we would use?
So every year, we would keep building the pot and, on the insurance side. So do have a bad year, there's money there to offset a bad year. See, that money would sit there, we wouldn't pull it out. In two years, if we had a savings to put somewhere else, that money has to stay there to offset in case you did have that one year as a bad year to make sure you have enough to cover that. Yes, ma'am?
And how much do we have to start off with?
Well, our recommendation's going to be to have about 1.5 in there, 1.5 million as a set aside to cover expenses. And Kim can speak to that more directly, but basically we would, what we're going to ask, and we can talk about this now or we can talk about it later, but what we had asked would be that we take any rollover funds from this year that weren't, that weren't used to put that towards it to make sure we have that money. I'll let Ms. LaConne speak more to that.
Yes, so we are still projecting our numbers when we get to the financial report. The year is not yet closed. We still have a lot of unknowns, but even looking at and projecting like what our sales tax is going to be in July and August, we are confident that we're going to be close to that 1.5 million. I can go into greater detail. I mean, I cannot sit here and say for certain it's going to be exactly 1.5 because of the sales taxes that guaranteed, but we are confident it's going to be somewhere around that number. And our recommendation would be to put that into a reserve just to get that started.
Okay. And when we have that conversation, when you come up again, can you tell us about what our CRP numbers are looking like? Because if we're not using the rollover for CIP, then what would we have to work with for those projects?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's sort of, it's a normal recommendation for someone going in this, one of the reasons people are a little resident to do it, reticent, is because you do have this possibility, your first year might not be the best year. There's no guarantee that you're, every year's going to come in an expected. You're going to be below expected, you're going to be above expected. Over time, you should, you will be at expected over time. But what if that first year's that year where you hit the 115? Well, you want to be able to, unless you have somewhere to go for that money if it comes up, it's a much better case scenario that you have that money there if you need it, so you don't have to go somewhere else looking for it, and then you don't have any surprises. As a rule of thumb, you want at least one times the margin. Your expected claims are roughly $5 million, so with a 15% margin, that's $750,000. A lot of groups like to have two times. So if you have that one bad year, you still have money if it's followed by highly unusual, but you know, there's no guarantees.
Thank you.
Yeah, quick, quick question. So if we started off with the 1.5, around the 1.5, and then depending on what was used from it, and we continued to add to it each year, and we were adding, you said roughly the 500 or so to it? Is that?
Well, I don't know that you'd be adding to that after the first year.
That's what I'm, I'm trying to figure, you know, we don't want the first year to be bad.
Correct.
Because we want multiple years to have accumulated, but what can we expect that after years two and three, if first year was decent and we didn't spend a lot of that money? I'm just trying to look at what our, how we get to our comfort zone.
Right. So if, let's say for, let's say for the sake of argument, you have 1.5 extra, so that's two times the margin. You're in great shape going forward. Claims come in expected, you go through the year, your claim's still going to be expected to go up in a trend, 10%. So the margin would increase that much more, but not dramatically. If you still had the 1.5, you'd still be in great shape. I mean, what you would expect over time is that just to continue, you don't necessarily have to fund at a higher level at that point. If you have two times the margin, I would suggest that's really, really all you need in the bag to comfortably go forward for an extended period of time. If you had a three or four bad years and you took that down, down below one times the margin, then you would, you would have to fund at a somewhat of a higher level. But what you could expect, if you do sort of run in that range of expected, is given the 1.5, that you would just go forward funding at expected. So, you know, whatever the expected cost would be what you would budget for going forward every year.
Okay.
Just a follow-up question, maybe this hits on what you were asking. The savings of $562,000, is that inclusive in the 1.5 million or is that separate? Yes, the savings that we would get from, if we go this route and the dental was 62 to 18, the savings for the healthcare plan, I think you estimated about a half a million. So that would be $562,000.
Right, so that's.
So is that going into that pot of 1.5 or is that just extra savings over here?
No, that's a separate. So we would put that aside for, as a sort of a reserve, whatever you have for your end funds. And then his projections are including those savings from going self-insured.
Right, so the only way you would, that savings would materialize is if you, if you're budgeting at the fully insured rate. So if you were budgeting next year at 17.6 or 19 on the ABF and you went to self-funding, then that 562,000 would materialize. I don't know what, what your level of budget is, but that savings is sort of just a, an example of how you will save money next year. So that's not real money today.
Correct. But budget speak, but speaking about a budget, it would be money.
We had increased our budget for this year by 8.9%. And so the fully insured, we would be, we would anticipate a shortfall. With the self-funding, you had the five.
Five, six.
Percent, so it was more favorable. And if it does come in as projected, then you would have a little bit of excess. But with a self-insured world, you just have, it is, it is a lot of unknowns, not knowing what the actual claims are going to be.
So that little bit of savings would go into the pot?
Correct.
That's what I'm, thank you.
But if we were fully insured, we could expect a 19% increase in our insurance costs.
And that's, that's gone. You know, they could have a great, you could have a great year, and the anthem doesn't say, hell, here, I'll give you some money back. That's, that's history.
We didn't, we didn't do fully insured this year. We had that, whatever you call it.
That would be a 19% increase for us.
That's our weighting into the.
Right, the ABF, yeah.
Yeah. That would hurt us more going, keeping with that than it would be what we're proposing.
Yeah, when I looked at it, I, you know, it didn't, it makes so much more sense going self-funded than, than the ABF. The ABF, you would have had to have claims come in at approximately 6% below expected to break even with the fully insured. You have a situation here where claims could come in almost 10% above expected and break even with the fully insured. Your worst-case scenario is just that 5% left there at that point. So you are, you do have some risk if you have, for whatever reason, a very bad year, but your history is not, does not look that way.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So I have this later in my part towards the end of the agenda, but if you'd like, we can continue the discussion now. If we take the, the way our proposal is with the, our situation is with the board supervisors is we have to, you know, the money right now is set to go into our CIP. We would need to request with the county permission to take their rollover funds and put them into our self-insured pot to do that. If, I've talked to Mr. Rogers and he felt comfortable with us doing, requesting that, but we need to do a memo to the board supervisors requesting that those funds, any rollover funds go towards a self-insured, if that's the direction y'all want to go. So first, I guess we've got to figure out if that's the direction you want to go, and if it is, we have to do that. We can continue this conversation on July 28th if you'd like, or we can continue it now, it's totally your decision.
Ma'am, Chair, do you need a motion or just the consensus among the board?
It would be a consensus.
Can I ask a question? If we're going to do this, we're going to have to come up with that 1.5 million.
That gives us two times the, we would recommend the 1.5, and we're pretty close to that.
It is, it is close. I mean, I can't say it's definite because your sales tax is not a definite revenue source, but we have the July and August sales tax. We also are, we will look at our grant reimbursements. What is received in July and August, we get to recognize the 22. If it comes in after that, then it would even, it is still revenue, but it's not recognized till the following year. We are current, we don't, we were trying to minimize anything that's getting pushed into the next year because if it gets pushed into the next year, it's going to lower that number. But looking at everything coming in, it's right about that mark, but I am still getting expenditures. So that's why I don't want to say it's definite, but it's definitely going to be over a million. And it is more than what he's, he was saying for the $750,000. But our recommendation was just to set, once we know the number, you want to do at least, I think at least a million, but 1.5 would give you some assurance.
And what is our current CIP balance?
So your current CIP, it's, you have, as of March 2022, that's when I verified it with the county, you had 1.4 million, and you did have some CIP allocations. It's already been allocated about $480,000. I think some of that was earmarked for air conditioning on the buses. You still have the funding from the dental clinic, and that was another, about another $300,000. Now, I just want to remind you, a lot of that, you know, majority of that is coming out as the contribution for the high school renovation. So if you took out, I think that was like 1.3 million, that's going to leave you in the carryover funds, about $45,000. And then you would still have your CIP allocation of 480. And, you know, I don't know what the timeframe is for this, for all the air conditionings on the buses, and then you still have the dental clinic. I know when I went to the board, the dental clinic was, funds were part of that discussion to fund the high school. The county did say that they were going to take it out of the carryover, so it's sort of just taking out of one pot. So that would still give you that $300,000.
But most of the projects in our CIP for this year that were proposed were the repaving at the high school. And due to the fact that the construction of the high school, the rear parking lot's not getting paved, the junior, the senior lot's not being repaved and so forth because we're not, some work's going to be done with the construction, so a lot of that repaving work will be a part of the construction project through CRA. So we can take, I believe it was about $380,000 in paving that we had set aside for the high school that we won't need to use for the high school this year because of the construction project. So I think as far as, you know, planned projects for this year, it kind of is a wash because of the construction project will be delaying any work at the high school that we had planned. If that helps digest this any.
I'm hearing a lot of numbers. I started off with 1.4 million, 48,000 allocated, then another, something to do with dental, with the dental clinic. Then I hear 45,480,000, now I hear 380,000 from paving. So my head is spinning. What I want to know, bottom line. What I want to know, bottom line, is when we go into the next school year, how much money does this board have to make improvements for our school?
So once the county takes out, and, and I haven't gotten the figures, you know, that they've actually done that transfer, but what they said they're set, setting aside for the high school project was 1.3 million and that would come off of that 1.4. So it was actually about 45,000 that was projected to be left over in the CIP, I, I'm sorry, in the carryover, year-end carryover funds. There is a separate allocation that's in a different fund, it's the CIP allocation, and that still holds the 480,000. So that's in di- was in addition to that one, to the 1.4 million. And then we still have a separate fund that ha- that holds those revenues from the dental clinic and it's around 300,000.
Do y'all want me to ask the question one more time or do you have the answer?
So does that mean there's 700 left?
Right, it's just a different pots, I just wanna be very transparent of where they are.
Okay, and then the paving? Is that in addition to this?
The, no, the, the paving is not gonna be done because we don't need to do the paving because of all the, the construction at the high school is gonna delay any paving and any paving that will take place will be a part of the construction project that is part of the 19.3 million dollars for that project. So there's no paving being done at the high school, that's why I was saying that paving is not happening. That was originally in our CIP for this year, but we pulled it when the high school project was approved. So therefore, there is no paving in our CIP at the high school for this year. We, we scratched it because there's no need to pave and then get it all dug back up.
Dr. Wells?
Ma'am.
Madam Chair, so does that mean that 700 about is including the pavement money that we chose not to spend because it's going to be in the high school project or is it on top of the 700?
What, what I'm trying to explain is there's no need to-
Included, thank you.
There's no need to budget for 300 some thousand dollars for paving because it's not gonna happen.
Exactly.
That's what I was trying to explain, I'm sorry.
So we're looking at about $700,000 total going into next year for improvements?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry it took us a while to get to that.
I know, y'all have all the details, so, thank you. So Board, do you want to, um, continue to talk about this and move forward with this tonight or move it to the work session?
I'd like to move forward tonight if possible.
Okay, so what do you need from us tonight?
So what, what I'll do is we'll, we'll, I will get with you and Mr. Terry and we'll draft a memo to the board of supervisors stating if y'all hit, we have consensus to move forward, stating that we would like to take the, the carryover funds that normally would be placed into the CIP and take those funds and place them into the health insurance plan to give us the ni- the, the amount of funds we would need in case we did have a cata- a catastrophic year, so to speak, with that if we go self-insured in October.
Okay, Board, are you okay with us moving forward drafting that statement to the board supervisors?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I think you have consensus.
Okay, yes, ma'am, thank you.
Now we're down to action items for point 01, approval of school board meeting dates.
So we have a proposal to the meeting dates, can you pull that up on there? So these are proposed dates for this year beginning, uh, with today obviously and then July 28th with the work session and so forth, I would add, and we just wanna make sure y'all are okay with, with the dates as posted. And if so, we will, uh, we can move forward with that and if it's not, we can make some changes.
Board, are you okay with the dates that have been presented?
I think they're already in my calendar.
Yeah, okay, um, and I'm fine with them as well.
Um, I have a question that came to my mind when I was looking at this. We have, um, in December, a meeting where the public can speak about the operational budget. And they usually could just come and tell us about things that they would like this to have as a priority. Then the budget is presented in February. I don't believe that we have typically ever had a formal hearing on the budget once it's been presented, is that correct?
Not to my knowledge.
I just wonder if that would be something that would be beneficial. This past year, it seemed like some folks wanted to make a comment about the budget and didn't have the opportunity per se to speak to us and they went to the board supervisors and spoke instead. Just wondered if that would be more appropriate, just something for us to think about, don't have to decide today.
I forgot all about that, that's a good idea.
You know, just if we present it and then have, even if it's just, you know, we're gonna have a short public session in case they wanted to come and comment on the budget that was been presented, I just think it would be better to, for us to hear it than the board supervisors. At least as a first point of contact.
So we could, we could plan out as we get into the winter and, and the February meeting when the budget is presented, that we could have just a general, uh, a period of time on the agenda for public comment?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Board, would you be okay with that? Okay.
Alright, that's fine.
Thank you.
And just remember in February, there are multiple dates, February into March, in case we have to do work sessions, depending on what we get from the state and how our budget, you know, has, uh, how we have to work through that. Hopefully, we can get it done in one or two meetings, but you never know what, it's gonna be a short session this year, so it should be done a little sooner than having to wait until, what, middle of June to finally have a, a budget, so-
Hopefully.
Uh, hopefully, we, we'll have that a little sooner this year.
Thank you.
So we'll move forward with these dates, alright, thank you.
Now we have, um, item 4 dot 02, reorg- reorganizing the board.
I need, I need, um, we need a motion of approval on the, uh-
Calendar.
On the calendar, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the calendar as presented.
Have a motion on the floor, have a second?
Second.
Uh, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries.
Thank you. So next is reorganization of the board. And so right now, um, Natalia is still listed as clerk and so we need to change that to, uh, Ms. McNerney is clerk and me as deputy clerk, so we can go to the courthouse and get sworn in on that and get Natalia off the list so she can not have to sit up here for the next, uh, next year. So I would ask that, uh, we move forward with that if that's possible.
Um, so Board, we have, uh, A, B, C, Dr. Norman, Assistant Superintendent, do we do these separately or all together?
I think we can do them all together.
Okay. Any questions about the, uh, the assignments? Okay, I need a motion.
I'll move, Madam Chair.
Um, I have a motion on the floor to approve 4 dot 02, have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Terry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
And next we have 4 point 03 and when we met, uh, in the May and June, we had some policy revisions that were pulled in the May meeting. We discussed some of those in the June meeting, but we have those who, that were not approved yet, we want to bring back to you uh, for this, for approval this evening, if, if you so feel obliged to do that. If not, we can, if you don't want to approve them tonight, uh, based off that, we could discuss them further at the twen- July 28th meeting. But we would, you know, if you have any questions you could ask, we would ask that, uh, we can move forward with those at this time.
Okay, um, Board, what is your pleasure? Would you like to go ahead and discuss these tonight?
I move that they go forward to the July 29th meeting.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor to postpone these until the June, um, work session, I mean July work session. I'd have a second.
Is that, well, what's the discussion time, not now?
Has to be second.
Oh, second, okay.
Oh, second.
Alright, I have a second in by Mrs. Berg, alright, uh, time for discussion, Mrs. Ligon?
No, not a big discussion, but I was just wondering why we were going, why we carried some further. We've had them for a minute.
I'll, I'll let Ms. Justice answer that.
Ms. Ligon, um, I'm con- I think the policies require more discussion as far as, I personally, I still have questions on the, um, language, on the shall, and re- changing it from a, um, a declare this is how it should be and adding that extra word, like duly notified. It adds an extra, um, expectation of what should happen in contrast to a, a statement of what is happening. And so it, we just need more discussion about it versus just here right now. I believe that is what we discussed at the last meeting. Uh, we heard back from V S B A on a couple items, but I have not heard back anything on that language.
Could, can I go through a couple of these, just some of these I think we could maybe could clear up tonight?
Sure.
So if we, if we look at, I know the first, the B, B A A does take, it strikes the word shall and says, "School board members have no authority or duties to accept this may be assigned." If you wanna push that one forward, that's fine. The next one was B C B and it's, and this one, the only change was the vice chairman, if present, presides in the absence of the chairman as opposed to shall preside. I don't think that changes the meaning of the policy, it just says that person presides, it puts it in present tense versus a future tense. So I don't think it really changes the policy at all. Again, that was B C B. Under B C E, again, it, it puts it, there are no standing committees of the school board as opposed to there shall be no standing committees. So again, it, it puts it from a present tense to a current, to a current tense. So if we could look at some of those that possibly could move forward, again, that's to your discretion, we can take them into July, July 28th if you'd like to. B D B, the only change there is, is school, is call provided, each member is notified as opposed to duly notified. Duly was scratched, just says you'll be notified. So again, that's some of the, the ones I think we could maybe move forward on, but again, if you wanna wait till July 28th, that, again, that's totally your discretion.
Well, we have a discussion on the floor, um, anyone else has any comments before we vote? Mr. Rossi?
Duly notified is if the board member is unable to be contacted and let's say we have to have an emergency meeting and that member cannot be reached, is that meeting not possible if that board member cannot be reached?
I think that would be a question for the attorney as far as what that would duly mean.
Right, right, and I think that duly noted, that we made an attempt versus shall be. And if they can't be, then, then what happens is there no, no way to hold a special meeting.
Okay, so that one was B D B A?
And, and Board, you know, I, I looked at these and I know that there was some concerns about shall and is and I did a, a little bit of research and it appears that a lot of, um, from what I'm reading, a lot of legal or attorneys are starting to shift to this type of language. I don't know why per se, but it seems like that they are shifting to it. So, you know, the attorney that wrote these may have just been following some type of protocol that attorneys are following. I don't fully understand the difference between the two, um, based on my research. So I'm fine with moving forward and, and, and voting on them just based on my research, but I'm also fine with, um, pushing them off if that was the board's pleasure. Um, I know Ms. Justice has reached out to, um, Elizabeth Ewing and she's responded to her on quite a few policies, but has not responded to her on this one. So I, I'm, I can go either way, um, just depending on what you want, so I'm, I'm fine to vote if you wish.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm the same. I didn't see enough difference to, to put it off, but if there's still clarification that's needed, um, I can, I can wait either way.
So the motion right now is to wait until July 28th?
Right, so, so my thought is if we could, if we are expecting something from Mrs. Ewing, then perhaps we push it off and just do a quick vote at the very beginning, because we have a lot of other policies to focus on on the 28th and not making a lengthy conversation, but hear from Ms. Ewing and, and that might be something we want to consider, but anybody?
Um, Madam Chair, I'd like to call a question.
Alright, we have a call for a question. That means I need a second to end the discussion?
Second.
Uh, we have a second from Mr. Rossi. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we need to vote on the motion. So, um, all in favor of delaying this until, uh, July's work session, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll push it off to July, um, and let's just make it a quick-
Yes, ma'am.
If we have a presentation from Ms. Ewing on once and done.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So item five is the consent agenda.
Alright, Board, I need a, a motion for the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I'd have a motion on the floor, I need a second?
Second.
I have a second from, was that Mr. Rossi? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
So as part of the consent agenda was personnel actions, uh, and so we have some new personnel, since new personnel in some different positions, I'd like to go ahead and introduce those to you and do a real quick bio on this, I'm gonna come up there if that's okay with y'all. So first we have Mr. Lance Martin, Mr. Martin, you can come on up. So, Mr. Lance Martin, he is being appointed as, as placed as principal at Temperance Elementary School. Uh, Mr. Martin attended Lynchburg College, now University of Lynchburg, where he earned a bachelor's degree in middle school education with a concentration in math and language arts. He then attended Liberty University where he earned a master's degree in administration supervision. Mr. Martin served as a classroom teacher from 2000 to 2015, teaching language arts and math. In 2015, he joined Amherst County Public Schools as an assistant principal at Nelson Middle School and served in that capacity for the past seven years. Please join me in welcoming Lance Martin to his new position as principal of Temperance Elementary School. Thank you, sir. Next we have Ms. Leah Gray. Ms. Leah Gray will be princ- pro-principal at Amelon Elementary School. Ms. Gray attended Liberty University where she earned a bachelor's of science degree in elementary education. From there, she earned a master's degree in educational leadership through Lynchburg College. She served as a classroom teacher for 16 years with elementary and middle school levels. Mrs. Gray has earned, has served at Amherst County Public Schools as principal of Nelson Middle School for the past two years. She previously served as principal of Lincoln Elementary School, Lynchburg City Schools, and has a total of seven years of experience as building administrator. Mrs. Gray brings experience as a former elementary principal for a turnaround school which moved that school into full accreditation. Please join me in welcoming Ms. Leah Gray to her new position as principal of Amelon Elementary School. Mr. Ryan White? Mr. Ryan White will be principal of Nelson Middle School. Mr. White attended college at Radford University where he earned his bachelor's degree in social science in 2005. He later attended Lynchburg College, now University of Lynchburg, where he earned a master's degree in education leadership in 2014. Mr. White has six years of classroom experience teaching U.S. history and government. He is, he has seven years of experience serving as an assistant principal, spending four years at Lincoln Middle School and three years at Amherst County High School. Please join me in welcoming Mr. Ryan White to his new position as principal of Nelson Middle School.
I just wanna say thank you for the opportunity, thanks for Dr. Wells, uh, thanks to the school board, thanks to Amherst County School uh, giving me this opportunity, I'm looking forward to it, I'm excited, ready to rock and roll, school's right around the corner and we will be good to go. Thank you.
I think the first day of school is 34 days away.
Who's counting?
Nobody, yeah, who's counting? Joey Crawford, principal of Amherst County High School, Mr. Crawford? So Joey Crawford attended Randolph Macon College where he earned a bachelor's degree in history in 2007. He attended Lynchburg College, now University of Lynchburg, where he earned his master's degree in educational leadership in 2018 and is continuing his education as he works towards his doctoral degree at the University of Lynchburg. Mr. Crawford has spent the entirety of his career with Amherst County Public Schools. He taught various history courses at Amherst County High School for 11 years before he accepted a leadership role at Amherst County Public Schools as an assistant principal at Amherst County High School. After serving for two years as an assistant principal at the high school, Mr. Crawford accepted the opportunity to serve as the principal of Temperance Elementary School in 2020. During the 2020, 2021 school year, he also served as principal for Amherst Remote Academy and has most recently been the division discipline coordinator. Please join me in welcoming Mr. Joey Crawford to his new position as principal of Amherst County High School.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you so much for the opportunity. I wanna say thank you to Dr. Wells and Dr. Norman and to the entire senior staff and central office. Just already in my two weeks there as the principal, they've been so much help. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the people of Temperance because the last two years have been great. But I am looking forward to being at Amherst County High School and with Dr. Wells's mantra of Team Amherst at Amherst County High School this year, we will focus on everything Lancer Pride. And that starts with getting Ms. Ligon her parking passes for the football team. So everything we do will revolve around Lancer Pride because it- So everything we do will revolve around Lancer Pride because it means a lot to me. Been here my whole life, similar to Dr. Wells, several of you, and it needs to mean a lot to our community. So thank you again for the opportunity.
Next we have Dr. Tim Hoden, chief operations officer. Dr. Hoden earned a bachelor's of science degree in education from Clarion University of Pennsylvania where he was a member of the Golden Eagles football team. He completed his master's in leadership and doctorate of education in leadership in Lynchburg College. He also completed the aspiring super tennis program through Virginia Tech. Dr. Hoden holds his superintendent license as well as endorsements in pre-K administration, earth and, and earth and space science. Dr. Hoden began as a chief operations officer in 2022. Dr. Hoden began his teaching career in Lynchburg City Schools where he taught science and coached football and wrestling at E.C. Glass High School. Dr. Hoden became an administrator at E.C. Glass High School before moving to Amherst County Public Schools where he served as an administrator for 10 years at Amherst County High School. He then became the director of operations for Campbell County Public Schools where he served in that position for 12 years. He was then the chief operations officer at Amherst County Public Schools in 2022. Please join me in welcoming Dr. Tim Hoden to Amherst County Public Schools.
Thank you, Dr. Wells, Dr. Norman. It's been a busy few weeks and I'm glad to be back home and busy at work. Thank you.
So next we have administrative items and that'll be Dr. Hoden.
Madam Chair, members of the board, the other day I was asked to participate in the interviews for the fourth SRO position. To my knowledge, that position has been filled. I know it was offered to a candidate. I'm not 100% sure if that candidate accepted, so I do not want to name a name tonight. However, that is a good step. We have also in the process of filling out the paperwork for the grant through the DCGS and our goal, whether it be next year or years to come, is to have a resource officer in each school. So that's at least a good step and in the right position to have all four of our current positions filled. Mr. Roaks and I have the pleasure to meet with Josh, who you met at the last board meeting about all the projects at the school, and I'll turn it over to him to fill you in on that.
Madam Chair, members of the board, one other thing too regarding the safety aspect. Dr. Hoden and I have been working on the grant for, through DCGS. You may have seen the news, some of the localities receiving the grant for digital mapping of the schools, which aids responders in different situations. We have also received that grant, I think I told you about it last month, we have received that grant and we're in the process of getting our information to the company and, you know, getting all the digital maps and things like that. That's probably 120 days out, so we're looking sometime in the fall for that project will be complete. As far as construction projects, again, like Dr. Hoden was talking about, the big ones at Amherst County High School, that project continues to move forward. We meet every two weeks. We met just yesterday as a matter of fact with updating on the plans. The, the goal is to have the plans, construction plans ready for bid sometime in the September timeframe, September, October. They will go out to bid and start construction hopefully sometime early 23, 2023. So that project's moving forward real well. The other thing that we have working on is also the central bathrooms. As far as the high school, Hurt and Prophet has also completed their site survey as well as the, which includes sole boring for the new auditorium as well as the field house. That has been completed as of Monday. The, talked to Mr. Rogers and Mr. Prophet in the county side early this week regarding the closing of the, the Berlin property. That has not taken place quite yet, but is on the line to do the, hopefully in the next few weeks or so. So that is still moving forward and also continue working, getting preliminary information from VDOT in regard to, you know, pulling the Lancer Lane back into a, a private road versus a VDOT road. So we're working on those projects as well. Moving forward as far as Central Elementary School, the bathroom project is going along well. Everything's been painted, the FMR, which is some of the wall curving that is going up and it should be finished in the next couple of days. Also, the plumber is coming tomorrow to start reinstalling all the new toilets and plumber sinks and those type of things in the schools that is moving forward and we don't anticipate any delays. As a matter of fact, I think they'll be working this weekend as well to get back on track with that. We started a new project again at Temperance next week. We've had some problems over the recent years with one of the classrooms that's underground there with water seeping through the walls as far as poured, either drain tile, water seeping through the walls and things like that. I've been working with Mr. Crawford while his tenure as principal there over the last few months. Last year, actually, they, the maintenance staff went in and tried to seal it from the inside and everything, did not solve the problem. So anyway, we got a contract to start up that next week that will come in and dig out the, the concrete right in the entrance for the pupils to go in in the morning from the parent lot and also dig the ground up going down to the playground. So it's a pretty extensive project. They start that next week. And what I go is put new drain tile in, seal it from the outside, put a membrane on it, seal that membrane and then go back on the inside and do it right. So we'll be starting that next week as well. And the, also the bus chargers for electric buses at the transportation office, the, I met the building inspector this afternoon. The electrical cabinets and wiring has been done to where the charging stations are going to go that, you know, obviously passed inspection. Now that gives a, a green light for AEP to start their work, which will probably take place in the next couple, two or three weeks. So we're, we're still a ways out to getting power to it and everything like that, but we have electrical cabinets up, the charging stations are in place. In addition to that, I know Dr. Hoden is working on a grant for the next two electric buses, which would give us a total of four. So we went ahead and did all the pre-wiring, pre-work for those so that when the two new buses come in, whenever next year, those charging stations and all the wiring and stuff like that will be ready to go and all the underground work is done. So those projects are moving well as forward. We're also getting ready obviously for the fall. We're starting next couple of weeks as far as the mulching and, and getting all the aesthetics of the outside of the school looking great, you know, for the students to hopefully come back in the fall. So we will be working on that in the next couple, two or three weeks as we get closer to the school season starting. So busy time, busy weeks, but it's all good, you know, every student, every day, so.
Thank you.
Also, I'd like to add, I was very graced to jump in this project at the high school and seeing the rendering drawings. Very excited for that. As a resident in the county for many years, it's much overdue and it's, it's a great, great project, so I can't wait to, to actually break ground on that.
I just had a quick question for Mr. Rhodes about the charging stations. How long do they actually take to charge a bus?
So those chargers will take, if a bus is fully at zero, it will take eight hours to fully charge a bus.
Okay.
So the, the theory is those buses will unplug, do their morning route, they can come back in, plug in in the middle of the day, they'll be 50, 60% charged, so it should only take them about three hours to, to fully charge again. So they'll be fully charged again before they go on their afternoon run.
And how long does a charge last? How much distance can they get?
The, the complicated answer is 130 miles. However, it's based on temperature, so a very hot day or a very cold day will be, it will be less than that. We will be doing some figures on that, having the drivers complete a daily log on their starting percent, their ending percent, and then how many miles they're getting. And, and then we'll keep track of the temperatures so that, so that we can do that. But they expect it is around 130 miles per trip.
And how many miles do we usually put on a bus on a day? Sorry.
I would have to look at that. I can answer that for another division, but for, I have not dug into that for here.
It obviously depends on route. I mean, Ron the camera obviously takes care of all the bus aspects of it, but in talking her, you know, each route's different. You go up Long Mountain, you have a lot more miles than you do in the Madison Heights area. I believe from, in talking to Ms. Campbell recently, I believe both the electric buses we have in our possession right now, both of them I think are scheduled for the Madison Heights, Amelon Route area. So it would be the end of the area, so they would pick the buses up here, go to Madison Heights, run their routes and come back. So it's more consolidated in those areas right there. So that's what her original plan is right now.
Okay.
And she does have the bus drivers identified who would be operating these buses as well.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Six point zero two?
Six point zero two. Madam Chair, members of the board, you have in front of you several VSBA policies that require a first read. We can discuss these further on our July 28th meeting.
Okay, thank you. I want to say thank you for giving us hard copies. I, I like to mark mine up and electronically it's a little difficult, so thank you. It's a nice addition.
Six point oh three? You also have in front of you the suspensions for the month of June.
Board, do y'all have any questions for policy or suspensions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have finance.
All right, so seven point oh one is to discuss the finance reports. The standard practice is that your June reports will be given in the August board meeting and that's with, because of our fiscal year ending June 30th and we're not cash basis, we're still truing up those revenue and expenditures. I, we have spoke about a lot of the things previously earlier in the meeting. We have verified that all the state revenue with the exception of the state sales tax has been received. The items besides the sales tax is the grant revenue. We're still getting in those expenditures, we're just truing everything up. Even when we give you the, the August report, it will still not be final, but it'll be closer because we will probably have gotten all of the, most of the expenditures, it'll be closer and you'll have another month's worth of revenue. Do you have any questions on that? All right, next we have seven point oh two, which is the S R three update. Now we have provided a, a chart that outlines, it's not just the S R three, it outlines all the S, all the cares, fundings that have been received and their spend down status. I wanted to first point out the S R one and the gears funds since they do expire September 30th of this year. We are on schedule to have those funds spent down by that date. That is the second and the third one. We had the 240,000, summer school is going to use that up as well as the, the gears, which has some cleaning and facilities. The S R two is the next set of funds that's going to expire September 30th of 2023. It's the last one on the first page. We've been very intentional to spend down the oldest funds first. And so some of the, some of the staff that's running in, in the first cares will move to the second cares. And that also has, about 37% of that grant also has some of the high school renovations. So to see that at 29.8% is not alarming. As far as the S R three, you will find that on the top of your third page. And that was the large award for the school division. And it's showing 15, 15.9% spent. Again, it's the state, we have some staff running through there, some personnel costs. Over 60% of that is the high school renovation, so it's not alarming to see that at 15.9%. One other thing I did want to point out, or just to let you know, is that the, the VDOE is going, is doing some cares monitoring and Amherst County has, is one of the divisions that's been selected. The process started back in May and we were doing the monitoring webinars. We had to provide all the monitoring protocol documents by June 30th and then VDOE is conducting the monitoring consultations in July and August. And Amherst County actually had theirs yesterday, so that has been concluded. The final monitoring report will be distributed, they, they said the end of August, beginning of September, and we will pass that on to the board once it's received. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
I have a, I thought you might be going on to something else, but I'm getting questions from school teachers. They want to know when they're getting their $1,000 bonus in from the state.
So that is slated for the first part of December when that's, when that funding is going to be received?
So the state has stated, the state, the state has told us around December 1st in that timeframe, we should get the funds and then we would hopefully be able to roll those funds out as soon as, you know, as soon as possible is where our goal would be. But we have to get the money from the state first before we can even push it back out to our staff. So once we get it, we will push it out. It'd be great to have a Christmas, my philosophy, it'd be great to have a little Christmas bonus in there if we can get it turned around that quick, but that'll really be determined on how soon we get the money from the state.
All right, thank you so much.
Next we have Dr. Norman in instruction. Dr. Norman?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. Last board meeting, we brought to you the grading regulations for you to review. You had provided us some guidance and feedback on that. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Maddox, who has met with the committee and has now provided you another grading regulation.
Okay. Madam Chair, members of the board, as Dr. Norman stated during the last meeting, I presented the board with a copy of the grading regulation document with the options from the grading committee. The committee listened to the discussions and the recommendations made by the board members as well as the teacher feedback on the survey and met with Dr. Wells and Dr. Norman. You should have access to that document with the recommended changes from Dr. Wells and Dr. Norman, and I can do my best to answer any questions you have.
Board members, do you have any questions? While I'm waiting, I have a couple.
Okay.
I noticed that it appears that there's no end of the nine weeks or semester exams. Is that something that's just been removed from the philosophy and we're not doing anymore? And if so, what's that rationale?
They actually do culminating activities, so it's progression. When we went to the mastery, progressive mastery and I forget the other one. Mastery of content, formative and summative assessments. That was basically the, the, the reasoning that was taken out probably about, I want to say, eight years ago. I mean, it's been a while. The only people that actually do exams are our dual enrollment, our early college, CBCC, GovSchool.
Okay. And I noticed that in this particular version, while there were a lot of strikeouts from the previous one, there was an addition for the mastery of content and the measure of progress. And I don't believe that was in the one we saw last time. And so my question is, I know that this is the practice you've been doing for the last two years, started I guess when we had COVID hit. And I'm assuming since it's in here, it is a recommendation from the grading committee. Was this, were teachers asked about this on the feedback survey?
I do believe so, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
And what kind of review or comments did you get from teachers about this on that survey?
I don't believe there was any uproar or negative, overarching negative comments that were made in regards to it. One of the things that we did is when we met with the committee a couple of years ago, it was all to make sure that we did formative assessments and summative assessments, formative practice where students who were learning the skill, who were needing additional support weren't graded to a point where that was just the final grade. And then they mastered that and then in the mastery of that particular skill, that was the one assessment that had the most weight for it. So homework assignments and quick checks in the classroom and them learning through the process or the skill was weighted less than what it was for the end of the result on when they should know the content. They've had practice, guided support with it, independent practice, and then that was weighted more. So the 60-40 split is really just making sure that kids have the opportunity to practice, to learn, to make mistakes, but not be so hindered on it until they actually mastered it. And when they mastered it, that 60% was what is towards their grade.
So I'm, I'm just trying to wrap my mind around it. So, you know, understand that they're working towards mastery and they're getting grades on these little chunks. So how does that work if I'm a student and I have mastered, let's, let's say 20% of the content that everyone else has mastered, but the other 80%, I'm making progress on that? How does that grade culminate onto that report card?
40% of it, of that particular skill or whatever is in regards to the, any 20 assignments that they would have on their formative learning, their progress monitoring, their... And then 60% of it is once they've actually mastered the skill, so that end of the nine weeks assessment or that end of the unit review and then assessment at the end.
I didn't think we were having a nine weeks assessment.
Student, I mean, teachers allow for a end of, a culminating activity. So right now we're working with, with teachers in our innovation program. So, right now, we're working with teachers in our innovation program in regarding to project-based learning, performance task. Well, that can't be done in one setting. So it's a culmination of what they do in the class as to their final grade. So it is, it's not considered a nine-week exam, but it is an end of the unit.
So you're saying that this culminating activity is 60% of the student's grade, and 40% are the chunks that they're getting along the way?
Well...
But they can have multiple, multiple assignments in the mastery of the content.
Right.
Just like in CTE, you know, you start in one area, and you want that student to progress, let's say welding. So we want them to master that content. So the measure of progress gives teachers the opportunity to give feedback back to the student on what they need to do to keep moving forward.
Can you explain that to me, about how this creates an opportunity for feedback? Because I think feedback, a teacher would...
Because the measure of progress should be, that's what we have. If you look right there, the teacher's responsibility with that would be to have those discussions with the children, with their students, and give them feedback on those assignments.
So is this grade category 60-40, is that per skill, or is that overall nine weeks grade?
Overall.
Overall nine weeks. So if I can give an example of a writing, a writing piece. I'm an English teacher, I'm going to teach you a expository writing. It's going to take me about three weeks to get through the parts of a writing process and work with students. I'm going to do individual writing conferences with that child to provide them feedback. I'm going to talk about the thesis, I'm going to talk about the paragraphs, I'm going to talk about how I'm going to support detailing facts with it. And then I'm going to literally give them grades as I'm responding and critiquing and going through their writing process. Those grades may be six or seven different grades that I'm going to give them that are formative. It teaches them the skill, and I want them to see, I want to see how they do it. Well, the end, that's all their rough draft. Well, the final writing piece that they take, and I may give four different writing prompts on expository during a nine weeks, nine weeks period, but that one, that final, I get three or four rough drafts, the final copy is my summative for that particular writing prompt. And I may have four or five writing prompts during a nine weeks time. So I'm gradually giving them feedback, I'm gradually giving them independent practice, guided practice. And then at the very end, their final hand-in, what they turn in to me, is their summative. It's, and that is the one that we want to count the most, because they've had the most practice, they've had, we've guided them through the process, we've given them feedback, and then they can provide that end, whether or not they've mastered the skill or not. Did they punctuate correctly? Did they have complete sentences? Did they have a thorough thought, a thorough thesis, a conclusion?
And that's a good example, that makes sense.
Okay.
So like if it was a quiz, that could be in either category, depending on what the content of that quiz was.
Exactly, yes, ma'am.
So my next question to follow up on that is, how do we communicate to parents? So if I'm a parent and my student gets a C, how do I know if that reflects my student's understanding of mastery versus progress? Because, yes, my student's working, and they've done well at what they've attempted, you know, they've gotten C work, but how do I, as a parent, really know how they have mastered? Do we give it to them as two separate grades?
No, ma'am.
Or do I just get a C for the nine weeks? Or as a parent, do I know my child has mastered 50%? And they've got 50% more to learn?
Yeah.
That's good feedback for a parent. How do we give that to a parent?
And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Maddox, but in Parent Portal, you can actually go into the grade book, and you can, the parents can click on the grade, and they can see the breakdown of this number of assignments are for mastery, and this number is for their formative learning, their progress in it. And so it kind of divvies it out for them.
And averages those two together for a parent?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we train parents on how to read, how to do that?
Well, hopefully, what's happening is that they are attending their parent-teacher conferences, that we are actually talking to them throughout the year, that when a child drops low in their grades, the teacher's contacting them, that's, that is a, I think that's back and forth. But yes, they do have information in their handbooks that discuss it. And that is something that the school does very well in communicating with parents, I believe.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate, I know that took a while, but...
No, that's okay.
It helped my brain understand that. And then the last question that I have, there was a document that was given to us last time, and it had like the three charts, like three columns, this was last Board meeting. I'll find it here in a minute. And on the back, it had a statement, oh, here it is, this one.
Right.
Yes.
And on the back, it had a little statement. It said, "Amherst County Public Schools will continue to work with students on an individual basis if extenuating circumstances exist causing a fluctuation in students' grade that is not reflective of their ability level and performance, previous performance."
I'll be more than happy to explain that, so...
Well, what I was going to say is, I know that I commented, and I think one other Board member did as well, that that sort of, you know, summarizes some of the heart that we want to have in our grading with that dual accountability between teachers and students, you know, but we do understand those extenuating circumstances. So I personally, Board, I liked that comment, but I did not see that on this new update. So I don't know if that was intentional, or what your thoughts are.
Well, I don't believe it was, I didn't have that in my notes, that that was something that you wanted in it.
Well, I don't know how the Board feels, but I just thought, I know that the heart of the zero...
Yes, ma'am.
Was this. But, so if that was something that the Board, or you guys thought was important, it was something I thought was important.
Right.
And I really think our teachers do that anyway.
I think so.
I mean, our teachers are professional, and I think, I think that's a given.
Yes.
Yeah.
But I do appreciate that the changes, I think that they look good.
Okay, and we'll go ahead and add that statement in there, in the regulation.
Okay. Board members, I know I've taken up a lot of time, do y'all have any thoughts or questions? Ms. Justice?
Thank you. So, I think I'm starting to understand the formative versus summative. So, for instance, in, we'll say pottery class, we practiced different skills, but we ended up with a final project, which was the summative, could have been, if that's how that teacher designed it. So that summative would be weighted at 60%, and then whatever grading method the teacher used for the formative would be 40%.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, now, in, say, a, I'll stick with your writing one. So, the number of summative projects or assignments varies by class and teacher preference, right?
Yes.
Good, all right. So, let's say I, I am, I'm a student, and in my formative, I am, I'm doing, I'm doing well, I'm turning in the assignments, but maybe I'm not necessarily getting it all, okay? So then you get this summative project, and even though my grades were fairly well, because I was showing progress and doing the, maybe, maybe I was supposed to, attendance was a part of it, maybe turning in was a part of it, maybe actual performance on the assignment was a part of it. And I do pretty well with that, but then when I get to my summative essay, it shows that I just haven't held on to it very well. If a parent sees a grade, so on the formative, let's say they had a B about, but then when they go to the summative, maybe it came out, there was a C, and so they get like a B minus when they average it. And the parent comes and says, "How is this? They've had a B." Do, is it explained, like you were asking on the Parent Portal, or we, well, they had it, but this was the final project, and what they held on to wasn't necessarily that?
Well, I think you could explain it from a concept, if we go back to my homework grades and my classwork grades. I did my homework, or I didn't do my homework and did this, but I might have gotten all my homework turned in and got a 100 for my homework, I might have had a 90 classwork average, but my test, I made a 60 on the test, or my assessment. So you can show the parent, well, the quizzes and tests and things like that, they had a lower grade, therefore it pulled the average down, as opposed, but you have those assessments there. So I think you can take it back to the other, to the older way of thinking about it. My tests, my tests and quizzes count a little bit more than my daily grades and my homework. These are where I'm just doing my formative assessments, when I'm trying to see what they know, as far as to know how to guide my instruction, whereas at the end, by final product, I expect them to be able to apply all that, and that's going to be a little bit more weight than just the average, the day-in, day-out type of grades.
Madam Chair, question? Okay, so...
May I say one thing? So one of the things that I wrote down from my notes at the last Board meeting was that the Board really wanted to be able to provide teachers autonomy, and to provide the communication available to parents. And so one of the things that we want to make sure is that if a parent comes and sees the grades in Parent Portal, and isn't happy with seeing what their child did in formative, and what the child did on the summative, and they just don't match up for them, then my expectations would be that the parent and the teacher talk. The teacher has full autonomy to allow for that child to redo or to do a different assignment, so that they can show that they've mastered that skill and remain at that high B, and not down. And so that's, that was my takeaway from the comments that were made by the Board, and hopefully, we have addressed that in the, in the regulation. If you need it, if you think it needs to be clearer. But I think our teachers do a really, really good job of working with parents to make sure that kids get every benefit that they can. I hope that answers what you, your question.
Yeah, I think, yes, I think this is really good, the, I'm losing my words, honestly. So, I think this is, it's good in each class. Basically, what this is doing, it's saying that this mastery project can only be 60% of the grade.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's what's being consistent, no matter what classroom it is. And each teacher gets to have the individual freedom to design what formative exercises are going to be like, and their weight, and, but the agreement is that that mastery exercise or exercises is only going to comprise 60%.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
Thank you for helping me understand.
If we have a consensus from the Board, we'd like to go ahead and provide this new grading regulation to our building administrators, so they can discuss it with teachers at the beginning of the school year.
With that added on to it? With that one statement, I believe she said yes?
All right.
I believe everybody feels good about it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your work.
You have a grading regulation. The next thing on the agenda is accountability, and I would like to just, you have on Board docs, two documents. The first one is the triennial accreditation from the state and its information. And I, it's very difficult, the state goes through lots and lots of information on accreditation, and I hope I can make this really simple for you. The triennial accreditation process for the state, they demands that every school who is fully accredited for a three-year consecutive state gets fully accredited for the next three years, and they don't have to go through a review process. They only have to go through a review process from the state every three years, unless they are not fully accredited. So we have in, on this document, if you turn it over to page two, Amherst County Public Schools, I'm just going to bring it down to where we are. Amherst County Public Schools, under that, for schools that are working towards a triennial accreditation, and then it breaks it down, we are under the first bullet. So if a school was accredited for two consecutive accreditation years, which was 2018-19, and 2019-2020, and is accredited in the upcoming school year of '22-23, based on the '21-22 school year, which was our spring assessments, they will be eligible for the triennial accreditation beginning for the accreditation year of '23-24. Okay, lots of years in there, lots of information in there. But what you need to know is, Amherst County Public Schools, all of our schools were fully accredited in 2018-19, so that's year one of our triennial. They were fully accredited in 2019-20, so that's our second year. So if we are fully accredited for what we just took in the spring for '22-23, which would be this school year, we would go into our triennial. All of our schools would go into our triennial. Now, if we have one or two schools that aren't accredited this school year, then all schools that are would move forward in the triennial, and then the ones that were not, they would be on hold, and we would have to go through a review. If that makes, that's clear as mud, right? The state will come out later on in the year in regards to the triennials, so you will see from the state which schools in our division are approved for that, and which ones are not. But that just kind of gives you an idea of where they're moving. And this is all based on the fact that the last two years accreditation was waived for all schools in the state of Virginia.
All right, you know, may I have a question?
That's okay.
All right, so in the year 1819, that's the accreditation year, so it was actually on data from the 1718?
Yes, ma'am.
And then the 1920 was on data from 1819, so we're not really considering those years in which we were under COVID?
Exactly.
Okay.
Well said. Okay, the next report that you have there is just the accountability results timeline. And so what happens every year is they start, we take our test in May. The state gets all of our results for all of our SOL assessments, and our student growth assessments that we took at the beginning of the year, and pulls all that data together. It takes them a long, long time to do that, and it's embargoed up until the time that they release it. So each year, I got, they come out with a timeline, I give you the timeline, and this is just to pinpoint some dates, so you'll know when to expect information from the state. The first date is August the 18th. They will do a news release that will come out from VDOE that will actually talk about the statewide, the division, and the schools' annual pass rates. And that's the overall, so what did the overall reading scores for Central Elementary? What was that pass rate? What was it overall for Amherst Elementary? What was it overall for the division? How did that compare to the state? And so we'll be able to get that big picture, you know, 30,000-foot. It will not be until September 6th, until the schools, until we at the division level receive the final accreditation data in our SSWS. Once it's put into SSWS, which is their system for confidential information to come to us, then we'll be able to pull that together, hopefully, in a quick turnaround time, because I know that two days later, we have a Board meeting. I can't promise you that with all that data, I'll be able to provide that information to you. It may be a, yeah, we did really well, or no, we didn't do really well, and this is what we're going to do. But definitely, at the October meeting, if I can't turn it around for the September meeting, you will have all the data and all of the information for each of the schools by subgroup, by grade level, by our division. And this is just the timeline for you in regards to that. Any questions on accountability? Okay, moving on to the next. I wanted to provide you with kindergarten registration numbers. This is just an update effective as of July 11th, I mean, July 8th. We had 200... We had two hundred and fifty-nine kindergarten students register already. That's seventeen down from where we were last year. Uh, that doesn't, actually, I'm pretty impressed with us having two hundred and fifty-nine already. We always get a group of students that come in the first week or two of school. Um, we remind them, yeah, the big yellow bus went by your house and you have a kindergartner and they need to report to school. So we usually pick up quite a few, so I'm, I'm excited that we have that many registered already. But that's just to kind of give you numbers. And we did it out by school so you could know where, where we have some of our larger kindergarten classes. Also, I don't have a document on this, but I just wanted to give you an update on Virtual Virginia. We have forty-three students that are, um, registered right now for Virtual Virginia courses. Thirty-two of them are based on medical. Again, this year, we, we don't offer Virtual Virginia, we don't offer any remote. Our, our entire thing is in-person. The only stipulation was if they had a medical condition, uh, we do still provide, um, remote services for them, and it's through Virtual Virginia. Um, we have eleven singletons where there's, they're only taking maybe one or two classes, and that's mainly at the high school. But it's broken down, um, pretty, pretty similar. We have eleven elementary students that are on Virtual Virginia next year, eight middle school students and thirteen high school students. Uh, the total cost for us on that is going to be right at about fifty-three thousand dollars. That will come out of our CARES funding. Uh, we had about four hundred thousand dollars set aside for that over a two-year period. I believe we've used about two hundred thousand of it, maybe, um, which we have about two hundred thousand left. And so fifty-three of it will go this year. And then, of course, if we have any blood, medical issues throughout the year, we would provide them remote services through Virtual Virginia as well. Any questions on that?
Madam Chair. Dr. Norman, thank you for this information, it's very helpful. Um, how does that cost for Virtual Virginia per student compare to what we're spending per student who aren't in Virtual Virginia?
So for a, um, elementary student, it costs two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for the courses. And then, of course, on top of that, we provide hotspots, um, the data piece that goes with it, the Chromebooks, and any AirPods and stuff like that that they would use. Again, with textbooks and information like that, and supplies and materials. For our middle school, uh, it's one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars per semester. And then, of course, that's the same thing for our high school. So secondary is done by semester, it's a little bit more. Elementary is done full year because they won't change teachers or anything. And in comparison to what that is, I think per student, I, I believe it's, we get, um, ADM of six thousand, six thousand?
So it sounds like, uh, sounds fairly reasonable to me.
Yes, ma'am, it is.
So that's very good.
It's very reasonable.
Care for those students.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Welcome. The next item on the list is, um, I've asked Dr. McGinnis if he would provide you with an update on summer school. Dr. McGinnis is our supervisor of innovation and learning, and next year, he's going to tackle history for us. I'm so excited about that. And he oversees our summer programs this year. Uh, and I've asked him to kind of give you an update because we've got some phenomenal things going on in summer programs this year. Dr. McGinnis?
Thank you, Dr. Norman. Uh, well, um, Madam Chair, members of the board, glad to be here to talk a little bit about summer school. But before I do that, I have to say summer school got off to a smooth start, a smooth transition from a regular school year. But this is why. I want to give thanks to our custodial, nutritional, transportation staffs, uh, our nursing staff, of course, our administrators who got everything planned and put together, our teachers and our instructional assistants, and of course, our students and parents. Because you see the numbers for, for our Power Scholar Academy, they came out and, and they loved it. So I want to give thanks to them for that smooth opening. They did it all, I was just the organizer, that's okay.
So looking at a Power Scholar program?
We didn't call it summer school, but it was more than that. We had a middle and high school summer camps, and we had two locations for the Power Scholars Academy. And the goal was, of course, to reduce the summer, the summer learning loss. That is that overall goal. But we also provided opportunities for students to recover credits and to add credits for advanced placements. This was more for our high school students. Uh, also the goal is to implement a balanced program for academics and enrichment. And we'll talk more about that, um, as we go along. And provide students the opportunity to apply learned skills to real-life situations. To continue to build and strengthen our team of, team leaders. And like I said, they did an outstanding job planning for this summer program. High school camp, we had eighteen staff, seven, one hundred and forty-two students. And I have to say about our, our teaching staff, because I was worried after school year, they had, that we wouldn't show out, but they all came to the call, and I was so, so pleased to have that number. They, the summer camp was credit recovery in four content areas. Usually we do it in two, which was, uh, math and reading, but they had four content areas. Economic and finance classes, we really had an overwhelming, um, turnout for that. And once again, summer school just ended today, so we have no data for you for this meeting. Content skills, uh, using our five Cs was basically incorporated into, uh, enrichment activities. So what they got in the classroom, it was extended through enrichment activities in the afternoon. Uh, enrichment activities, it was application of life skills through real-life scenarios. In the high school, use escape rooms. And what was so amazing about this is that the students, once they learned their skills, created escape rooms, uh, which was, uh, great. And basically, they had to, whatever skill they were learning for that escape room, they used that skill in order for them to go through different activities for them to get out of that room. And it was, um, a wonderful activity for them. Middle school camp, we had fifteen staff, members of seven seventy students. And this is also included, um, our rising, um, sixth graders going to seventh grade, uh, taking the bridge math. Uh, they, they focused on English and math acceleration. Uh, enrichment opportunities was incorporate life skills with content and resources. Research-based field trip, and this was what I thought was so interesting. They took two field trips, uh, one was to Liberty University, um, library, so that they could learn to, to gather research. They actually went there to do research. And then they went to the Frontier Museum. And all of this was for them to actually come back and create a problem-based experience. And I had a little video for you to, they had integrated programs. This video I wanted to share with you so much of what they did, and it was about the, uh, the Nola Gray opportunity that they did. And they created a skit from it, from their research, from the library, they created a skit. But I can't show it to you because we have one student who, uh, it couldn't be photographed or shown, so I ca, I can't show it. Out of respect for the parent and that student. Power Scholar, uh, uh, Academy, we had fifty-six students serving, three hundred and seventy-five registered scholar students. And we had two locations, one on the north side and one on the south side. And the Power Scholar program was actually a joint program that started at Madison Heights, started about five years ago between the, um, Jameson YMCA program, the first year that we started, the Jameson ran the whole program. And it was basically incorporating academics with enrichment, uh, program. And so it extended from Madison Heights to include all of the elementary schools. Combines academic instruction and hands-on enrichment activities, including also the, uh, field trips. Some of the acti, the enrichment activities that included was, uh, STEM, um, real-world, um, activities, drama theater awareness, college and career. They actually also visited Liberty University and had a tour of what the university life was like. Health and physical education, um, they, um, experimented, uh, basically what to good exercise, good meals to eat, uh, problem-based learning and that, problem-based learning that the kids actually got to create and participate in, in this program also. Connect with the community with weekly newsletters. And the camp showcased, uh, this week, uh, the students put together what they had done all summer and showcased invited parents to come in. And, um, I think that was a awesome activity for them. And this is a Bell Scholar, so it sets up with a pre-assessment of where the students are. The teachers that are giving, giving that information, that, uh, develop, uh, lesson plans and programs around those kids' skills. Then at the end, which should have been, um, sometime this week, they did a post-assessment, and it's basically focused on reading and math. So that's in a nutshell what our summer school was all about. But then I will say this, it was great to see those smiling faces. Any questions? That's, that's a short view because we don't have any data for you right now.
Madam Chair, thank you. So this is just so exciting to me. So in your Power Scholar Academy in the high school, you had a parent, you had a teacher-student ratio of seven point eight. And in your middle school, it was fif, um, four point six seven teacher to student. What a fantastic, enriching opportunity, um, in our summer school, Power Scholar. So thank you so much.
Well, like I said, the thanks is given, that they did a great job and we got off to a smooth. So and hopefully it ended the day, but I wasn't able to be there, and I hope we had a smooth ending. But, uh, hopefully we can provide you with some good results.
One more question?
One more question. In the Bell Excel assessments, um, will those translate as far as comparisons to the assessments that were done in the, like, end of school year? Or will, will they compare very well?
The Bell assessment, basically, is assessment of its own for that program. So it basically assessed where the kids are, and then, of course, we give instructions up to that point. And then it assess them at the end and see how much they've grown. So hopefully, like I said, the goal is to reduce that summer loss. Any other questions?
Dr. McGinnis, I appreciate it, and I think you will look forward to hearing about the data.
Well, I thank you for the opportunity because, like I said, it was great to see those smiling faces.
Good to hear from you, thank you.
Next we have information items from Student Services and Supports.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, before I start, my couple of quick updates tonight, I did want to take a moment and personally thank Dr. Marvin McGinnis. I was very pleased to hand that responsibility of summer school to him this year. Um, and I've just loved seeing him take that to all new heights. Well, in all seriousness, it has been wonderful to watch Dr. McGinnis take charge of that. Staff have responded incredibly well, and I didn't think we could have higher numbers than last year, and lo and behold, there we are. So we're doing some incredible work over the summer. So a couple of updates for the board this evening. The first is related to Medicaid. I'm very pleased to announce that we have an accepted and executed interagency agreement with the DMAS of Virginia. Uh, we are officially business partners with them, we can exchange information with them. We are a recognized provider in the state of Virginia for Medicaid. We have finally cleared that hurdle, what felt like years and years and years and years.
This is my Christmas in July.
So we are very pleased with that. That does clear us, it did occur before July one, which we were hoping would be the case. We are clear to go at the start of school this year. Um, I was hoping to be able to update the board on the Medicaid expansion, but I believe that there are some politicians and others that had other plans for that at this point, so they're still working on the details of all that. I am hopeful we'll have that information before August so we can get some of those things in place before we get moving in the school year. The expansion, again, as a reminder, at least as it was proposed, would expand our pool of potential reimbursement candidates from a student's perspective, not just as students identified with disabilities and serve for the IEP, but any student that meets criteria under Medicaid. So obviously that would change the scope of our program quite a bit if that expansion goes through. Yes, ma'am.
Are we going to be updating, um, all our paperwork for our parents when they come in to get everything set for their kids to start school again? Where we're going to have a spot in there to collect all that information?
We do, it's actually, yeah, it's one consent form, and we actually started that process this past year. So we've already been working through that with some families. We do that as a part of the IEP process, and we're kind of revisiting that this year with families as well.
If they're going to expand everything, though, shouldn't we doing, be doing that for all of our students?
We should, but we're not sure exactly what that looks like yet. That's a part of that expansion and guidance that we're going to get along those lines. We have that pretty well secured for what currently exists. Not sure if that's going to be the exact same thing for other students or if that'll change with that expansion. But hopefully we'll have that guidance here very shortly, of course, once all that's approved and, and moving forward.
All right, thank you.
Absolutely, all right. Um, that's all the information I have, but I'd be happy to answer any other questions there might be from the board at this point. All right. I did want to also give another quick update as it relates to our Smart Start program. So our four-year-old programs, another way to think about that, uh, through the VPI grant in the state of Virginia. Up to date, we've received one hundred and twenty-six applications, one hundred and seven of those students were eligible. They met criteria as laid out as a part of that grant. Um, and we are expecting to fill those up here shortly. It's well ahead of where we typically are at this point in the calendar and really strong response from the community. To break that down for the board, our new program, or our reconstituted program, maybe is a way to say it, at Amherst Elementary School only has one spot remaining, so that has filled up very nicely, bringing that back on, online in the division. Uh, our programs at both Central Elementary School and Amalon Elementary School are full at this point. We have filled all available slots. Madison Heights, typically that is our program that fills up last, but they only have eleven slots left at this point. And as a reminder for the board, we actually increased by twenty slots this year. Um, so we are already over the number of students that we served in this program last year. Um, and again, I think this is my night for public recognition, but Ms. Julie Albert, Ms. Gwynne Ellis, and Ms. Kelsey Dolan in our office have done a phenomenal job of working with the families of Amherst County to make sure this information was out there, really getting families in to know that this resource was available, as well as coordinating with community agencies. Of those that aren't eligible for the program, all have been referred to other providers in the area that are working with them to figure out those childcare needs. So very, very pleased with their work and wanted to give that credit where it is due to them this evening. But again, any questions from the board? Very happy to answer those this evening.
I don't see any questions, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next we have Human Resources, Mr. Gallagher, who is joining us from vacation. And, uh, we're going to slide a mic in front so make sure everybody can hear everything okay.
All right, thank you for that. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. First of all, I just wanted to say thank you to whoever put me following Medicaid update. I really appreciate that, that wonderful news, you're going to slide me in after that. I do have a number of things to discuss with you this evening. The first one is our vacancy report, uh, our monthly update of where we are with filling our positions. And as you can see, um, we have several areas that I feel like we are really looking to try to make sure we get filled in our professional ranks, uh, the science teacher position with three of those remaining. We do have one potential candidate, uh, that we could be interviewing very soon in that regard. But English, two positions in CTE, those are, I guess, what you would also call our critical shortage areas. And we do still have, uh, we have very few candidates currently, but we are certainly doing everything we can to find candidates that will also lead into my grant discussion in a few minutes. As you can see in the classified positions, the areas that I would also consider as critical shortage areas, you know, bus driver, we continue with six vacancies there, custodial support and instructional assistance. Uh, we do continue to hold interviews, so we may be filling several of those in the near future. But I will certainly take any questions that you have regarding vacancy update.
Don't see any, Mr. Gallagher, thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate your work on that.
The next piece that I have is the memorandum you see, oh, actually, no, I'm going to jump ahead. Actually, the next piece I have is the new teacher orientation schedule. You should have that in front of you as well. Uh, our new teacher orientation begins in two weeks today, if you can believe that. And this is coming up very soon. We have two weeks before that we, uh, we begin this process over again. Uh, we've hired some tremendous teachers leading into the school year. I wanted you all to be aware of this schedule. As you know, this is our third year, uh, that we've actually extended this out from a week of new teacher orientation. As you know, this is our third year that we've actually extended this out from a week of new teacher orientation to seven days. So we actually begin on Thursday, the 28th. I'm fortunate enough to have them with me for the majority of the first two days to go through some professional development that I think has been very meaningful for them. They do also get to work with their, they get to work with all of our lead mentors to understand the mentor program Friday afternoon. There's a couple of dates I want to make sure I remind you all of particularly because you're invited to them. The first morning, which is Thursday, the 28th, from 8:00 to 8:30, we have a welcome breakfast for all of our new teachers. And in the past, you know, Ms. Ligon, you have attended that and other members have attended as well. Ms. Thompson, I believe you attended as well as Vice Chair. And I think you are all welcome, by the way, to participate in that breakfast. And that's going to be at Manellison Middle School in our library. You don't have to stay throughout all the training, but at least just to, you know, say hi to folks and give them a nice send-off to their training would be really nice. On Tuesday, the second, you'll see that our new teacher luncheon this year will be at Sweet Prior College, the Profro main dining hall, the same place we had this year, our retirement ceremony. So that is always an amazing event. Ms. Thompson, you will be on the agenda in closing that lunch, so hopefully you are available for that. But again, I do encourage all of you to lock that off and to please make time. It's so important for our new teachers to get an understanding of who our board representatives are. I just think that's always an amazing event every year. Something on that Monday, on the first, something will continue for our third year, is our bus tour. That has gone over very well. All of our new teachers have really enjoyed that. We always have some tremendous tour guides. Dr. Wells, I believe you again will be one of our guides. Kelly Holmes has done that. Joey Crawford has also been a tour guide. And so we get to have everybody experience all of Amherst County, so you understand where all of our families are, where our students are coming from. And even individuals, quite honestly, who have been in the region, we really have been gone all through Amherst County until you're taking one of our bus tours. And it's just, it's just been pretty fantastic. You can see the other things that are occurring. The majority of the second week is going to be with instructional staff or time on their own. They are going to have some time to work with their mentors in their buildings. The Friday, in concluding the new teacher orientation, they will have time to work with principals and also some of the mentors in beginning their induction to their own buildings. And then they get some time to work in their own schools. During our new teacher forums, they've asked for some of these things. Well, they've asked that the bus tours continue. That's gone over very well. They have asked for more time in their buildings with their mentors, which we've also given them. So they've appreciated the things that we've lined out. We've gotten very good feedback the last three years from the induction week. So I won't belabor that anymore, but I want you to understand that you're invited. Any questions about that? Okay.
Well, it looks like an exciting week.
My memo, the next memorandum in there is about the ACPS Teacher Performance Evaluation System and Principal Performance Evaluation Revisions. Last year, the state updated their guidelines for uniform performance standards and evaluation criteria for teachers and principals. So we have known for a while and anticipated that there were going to be revisions and changes to our evaluation systems that were going to include some areas of cultural competency and also some training that was going to be coming with that. But this memo kind of outlines what the Virginia Department of Education has come up with for their revisions to the standards within the, I call it the TPEs, you know, the Teacher Performance Evaluation System and the PPEs. They not only added a standard six to both of those for culturally responsive instructional practices, equitable practices, but they also revised a little bit all of the standards. They did some revisions to all the standards. And quite honestly, I feel like a lot of those were really nice modifications and changes. Of course, the standard six is altogether new, so that's not a revision in each of these systems that you'll see. So you also, I don't know if any of you took advantage of it, but I invited all of you to participate in the training that we experienced for this process. There was two weeks in June where the DOE provided training on the new evaluation systems. They, I invited you to do that. All of our administrators, all of our building level administrators, as well as our instructional supervisors participated in this training so that everybody would be on board because we are ultimately going to be responsible for training all of our teachers on this system so they have an understanding of what it looks like, what they're supposed to do to be able to meet these competencies. A couple of things that are outlined in that memo, if you, for you to know, is that the standards that they have revised, they're, those are locked in essentially. We don't have any authority to change any of those standards. Those are what we have to utilize as our performance evaluation systems, the standards. The indicators, we have flexibility, so we can modify the indicators. They have gone through the DOE, when I say they, and modified a lot of the indicators throughout the standards. And you'll see that in the document, the first section of those documents, or they're marked up revisions, not only to the standards, but also to the indicators, along with their new standard six, which is fresh and clean because they're not revised. Those are new. What we did, I'm sorry, so what we did is that this came out in mid-June. I wanted to pull a work group together that represented individuals who have been master teachers, both in Amherst County and in other divisions, as well as administrators that represented both each level of our schools, as well as central office. And I feel like I pulled an excellent team together in order to do that, who understand instruction. They understand supervision and evaluation. And I wanted them to do two things. One, to walk through together through several meetings to identify the indicators that we felt maybe needed further revision. Do we like the different indicators and the ways they were revised by the state? And if not, what would we want to change? And that was one of the things we did. The second thing that we are tasking this group with is to develop in the training package that we're going to utilize for all of our principals to present to all of our teachers during the work week when they return because everyone is going to have to get trained in these systems so they understand what they need to do to meet the standards. So if you look through the two documents that I've provided you, the TPEs and PPEs, it's going to give you the Virginia Department of Education's suggested revisions. And in the second parts of the document, give you a clean version with those revisions accepted. And where there are indicators that we felt like needed to be further revised, you will see either a yellow highlight, meaning that we've either added or revised the language, or you're going to see a pink highlight, which means we struck that language from the proposed revisions. And so the purpose of tonight is to put this before you. I told you before, as soon as this information comes to us in any meaningful manner, we will work on it and put it before you for review as soon as we are able. So this is a first read, if you would. We are required to adopt the TPEs and PPEs. The board, they are board adopted. And so my hope is that you will digest all of this. It's a lot of information. You can come up with any kind of questions, thoughts, suggestions, and communicate those with me prior to the 28th in our work session or on the 28th during that work session. My goal and hope is that we work through it together and we will consider any further revisions you all suggest and that we come out of this with adopted TPEs and PPEs, that we can utilize these systems and also integrate them into our talent ed system so we can actually begin, you know, as soon as we hit the ground running with teachers with the observation and evaluation process, so hopefully that can be adopted on the 28th. That was a lot to spit out. Anybody have questions or further, any further to ask? I can clarify a bit.
Mr. Gallagher, I want to say thank you. That was a lot of work to you and your group that worked on this. I looked at it quite a bit today. I actually took the training myself and got my five points.
Excellent.
So just wanted to say I appreciate you giving this to us and giving us an opportunity to look over it and giving you some feedback on it. I think you've, you and your team have done a good job. My question that I have is about the policy recommendation that you're making, GCM. Do we anticipate?
Yeah, I'm going to get there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But I'm happy to take it now.
Well, I was just wondering if we anticipate VSBA coming forward with a policy on this because I know it's something that we're required to do, I'm assuming by Virginia code or Virginia law. So are they planning to send a policy out or?
Well, I worked with counsel in developing this because I didn't have the guidance of VSBA policy yet and he was not aware of one coming out yet. He didn't tell me if he anticipated one forthcoming. That's something we can look into. I can tell you that it is a requirement that needs to be implemented relatively immediately. If you, if you look at the language, all of our licensed personnel need to be trained, receive the training prior to the beginning of the school year and then every two years. And yes, that the module that I gave you all the link to, I think that they did a reasonable job of making that somewhat broad and meeting the criteria without, you know, I think crossing any boundaries that shouldn't be. And I think it's a, you know, it would actually suffice and work as that training module to meet our policy. Finally, fear of waiting, you know, I don't like to wait when something is a mandate, needs to be done. And through legal counsel, he said, if you take the exact, essentially if you take that code specifically and you pledge your policy, it's tied to that without a whole lot of other fluff or adding things to it, that will, that will meet the requirement and it's all that it needs to be. I mean, if VSBA comes out with one, I guess we could look at potentially further revising. And my concern is, or not concerned, I feel like we need to have a policy in place by the 28th because I do really anticipate the need to push this out, this module, to all of our staff because I also need to get verification that they've all completed it before they begin on, what is it, the 17th of August? So I want to make sure everybody has time for that. I don't think it's a daunting task to complete the module. It's relatively self-explanatory. I think it won't pose any challenges, but I need to, I need to confirm that everybody's done it before they begin. So I really feel like the policy needs to be in place to support my pushing that out and requiring individuals to complete that and then for me to confirm their completion. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Board, do y'all have any questions?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to say thank you to whoever highlighted everything for us with the changes. That was great and thank you so much.
Absolutely. No, and again, it's a lot, so look it over. And I fully expect that this is a discussion point for potential adoption for the 28th, that that works for you all.
Thank you.
And Mr. Gallagher, you said the yellow was things that we added and the pink highlight were things that we were striking. Is that correct?
That's right. Yellow is we added or revised the language. And the pink is that we struck that language. Is that correct? Okay? Well, we'll move forward into the, I mean, I can't move into the policy.
Ms. Thompson has a question, Jim.
I think Mrs. Justice has a quick question before we leave that topic.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You referenced a module being sent to us. What did that come under? Because I would love to take a look at it.
Yeah, and so I'm going to jump forward because the module is something that I included in the memo for the, for the proposed policy, the cultural competency training, GCM. I'll just go there next, if that's okay?
The memo's posted.
I'm sorry?
I was letting her know the memo was posted on the screen.
Oh, that's on board docs. So if you look at it, Code of Virginia requires that each teacher and other school board employee holding a license, complete cultural competency training in accordance with guidance issued by the board at least every two years. It also, there is also a requirement, though it's not explicit there, that it be done prior to the beginning of this school year is when that becomes effective. And then again, they complete it now and that they complete it also every two years. So in response to that requirement, what I did is I not only attached the policy for first review on the second page there for you, but I also gave you access to the training module that the DOE created to help meet that requirement. And that link is provided in that memo. And numerous people have taken it and have gotten a very positive feedback that has been beneficial. I would love each of you to go in and do that. If you don't have a license, then you're not required to do it. But it probably would be really good for you to understand what it's all about and to walk through it.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Gallagher, two questions. One, you referenced implicit, not explicit. What was it that was implicit as a requirement versus explicit?
Okay, so it says, it says that they shall complete cultural competency training. But what I'm trying to say is in the language, if you go to it, that requirement means it has to be done before the start of this school year, the 2022, 2023 school year. So the timeline is what I was saying wasn't, you know, in my memo explicit there. But it does have to be required, not only every two years, but before the beginning of this school year.
Thank you. And one more question. You refer to counsel. I'm assuming that's our attorney Frank Wright? Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, let me see where that leaves me. I believe the recruiting and retention support grant, there's a memo before you. We were notified in early June, the Department of Education was giving us an opportunity to submit, submit a plan for receiving a recruitment and retention support grant. It comes out of the American Rescue Plan for elementary, secondary schools and so forth. It was an opportunity in essence to receive up to $30,000 for recruitment incentives to new employees. And the new employees need to be those in critical shortage areas. And it can be both professional and support staff. I kind of walked through some of those areas with you in the vacancy memo tonight. I think I've told you before in our past meetings that this past year was the first year that I've ever experienced that we went through an entire year and didn't have all of our vacancies filled, that we had any. It wasn't always a lot, but we were never completely 100% staffed. And I don't want to go through that again. We're making a effort not to. But this is an opportunity to perhaps incentivize hiring individuals with some recruiting and also some retention bonuses to provide in those areas. Unfortunately, the grant does not permit us to use these, use any of the $30,000 to provide retention bonuses for current employees. So I can only use these as sign-on bonuses. For example, we can distribute them in a manner that can be done, you know, over the course of, you know, two installments over the year if you want to ensure the individuals stay with you. We can talk about how to implement those things. What you will see is that the areas that we've noted were bus driver, custodian, as far as our support staff, essential, critical shortage area individuals, and then English teachers, science teachers, math. At the time, we don't currently have a math vacancy. At the time, we did as CTE teachers. So any of the critical shortage areas that we identify, we, if approved, we will be able to provide a $2,000 signing bonus to 10 of our critical shortage areas teachers and then $1,000 each for the 10 support staff positions above. I should know, we're supposed to find out by tomorrow on the 15th whether we're approved for that grant. I think we wrote an excellent grant to hopefully entice them into giving us the money. And I'm hoping that it will, it will work. Because if we do have that money, we'll begin to promote these incentives very quickly so that we can try to attract individuals here to fill these positions. Because it is, like I said, two weeks, we've got new teachers on the ground, so we're going to get things moving. But I'll take any questions that you might have.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Rossi?
All right, so you're not allowed to give retention funds, but it's called a retention grant? I'm confused there because...
It's called a recruiting and retention grant. And that is, I guess, you recruit them and pay them and you can actually, you know, give it in two installments if you want. You know, you could do that second semester to make sure that you're at least retaining them for a period of time. However, no, it's not ongoing. It's not something that you can, you know, it's not something that's going to reoccur for them. And it is specifically indicated that you cannot use it for current staff. It is, it is for recruiting in essence. The retention piece is hopefully the incentive for them to stay. And then if you choose to break up those payments in a manner to make sure they're with you for a little bit of time, that may be helpful.
All right. Thank you for clearing that up.
It's not very clear in the name of the grant.
No.
No, no, the fact that they put retention in there actually is what excited me. My initial thought was how I was going to spread this out in just one specific area, to be honest with you. honest with you, even among our current individuals. But unfortunately, I was not able to do that. So, but I wanted you to be aware of what we're trying to go after to, to at least try to incentivize, um, getting some of these critical shortage areas filled hopefully.
Yeah. I think it's to recruit and then retain those who we recruited for at least the school year by giving them installments.
That's probably more accurate. Yes, sir.
People doing any questions?
Do I have another? I'm not sure if I have another piece or not, to be honest with you. Looking from here, I think that was all my pieces.
I think that's all you have, Mr. Gallagher.
I think that was all the questions and I think all of your mimos.
Absolutely. There you go.
Thank you and we appreciate you giving us your time on vacation as well.
Absolutely. It was a pleasure. I appreciate you all.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
So, next I have superintendent matters and I want to start with, uh, the leadership conference. We did leadership conference Tuesday and we finished, wrapped it up today. So, on Tuesday, we kind of had a general discussion and again, discussing my philosophy moving into this role as superintendent. And then I went over some operational aspects of, of school discipline, school safety and things of that nature. Uh, we had a picnic lunch down at River Ridge Park and just had some, uh, I guess, family time is what you call it, some, some fellowship together. So, part of our, you know, part of our goal is to build those relationships. Uh, we're pushing relationships from our teachers down to our students and from our schools out to our community. But in order to do that, we have to have relationships amongst ourselves. And we had to take some time to really have some time away from the, the, the classroom, so to speak, and get outside the building and, and develop some of those, uh, relationships with people and get to know each other on a, on a level outside of the school building. So, we took some time, uh, Tuesday afternoon to do that and we had, let us, they let us use the kayaks and canoes to get underwater and do some things like that. Um, some of our, uh, Ms. Cecil here set up a, uh, little competition activity for our staff to have a little friendly competition amongst some, amongst some teams. And, uh, this, I think this staff seemed to enjoy that quite a bit. And then again, we had some canoe time. Uh, Mr. Rokes and Mr. Hoden, Dr. Hoden cooked lunch on the grill for hamburgers and hot dogs that our cafeteria staff provided. So, it's just a good time to get away and kind of sit there and, and relax a little bit and do some things outside of the building. And then we brought them back in, uh, this morning to kind of go through some instructional expectations and, and plans for the year moving forward. So, today was more, uh, the instructional side and, and doing some activities, uh, to get them prepared, uh, for the start, for the teachers coming back and where we are as a, where we want to go as a division. But the big push is, you know, is, is the team Amherst approach that we're, we're, we're all here together. We're all moving to the same, for the same purpose and for the same cause. And we all need to pull together and that includes not just the school, and as we move forward with this, it's the school, it's our schools, but also as our, our parents, our community and our, and our stakeholder groups and how we can all pull together to, to push our students to where they need to be upon graduation and how we can do that and support that. So, that's our, that's my big push coming forward. But we did have our leadership conference and, uh, you know, we're getting ready for, uh, again, 34 days away from the first day of school and two weeks away until our new teachers show up. So, it's catching up with us pretty quick and it'll be here before we know it. Um, any questions on that?
Don't believe so. Thank you.
So, the next thing I want to discuss with you is the James River Association Noah BeWett Grant. We're starting year two of that. So, last week, uh, you know, we're in that with Surrey County and Hopewell and us, with the three school divisions that are part of that grant. Uh, so we have an, uh, upper James, which is us. We have the Hopewell area, the middle James where it goes, where it goes, uh, from fresh to brackish. And then Surrey is going down towards the saltwater end of the James River. And so, we had teachers, the JRA, uh, brought the teachers from Surrey and Hopewell up here to Amherst County this year. So, our teachers got to sleep on their own beds versus having to go to a hotel. But they probably would prefer the hotel because they got to stay at the, uh, at the Kredok Terry this year where our teachers, when they went down last year, got to stay on a Prescott Wildlife Refuge in a bunkhouse. So, uh, they got the better end of it this year, but it was good fellowship. It was good, uh, good work together with those teachers and them coming together and some administrators from those schools and our schools working together on the plans for this coming year. And part of it was for the lower James River peop-, uh, staff to come up here and see what the James, what our river is like as opposed, because down there they have oysters and they have other things. But up here, you know, our river is much, the same water, the same river, but it's much different than down there. So, it's to get them experience and try, so they understand. So, they're talking to their students. They understand what the river up here is like. They have a better, uh, they can have better discussions about that. And the grant, part of the grant is for our students, as you know, our seventh graders all participate in this and they do the James River trips. Um, and they'll be doing them in September this year. Uh, and then part of that is also to do a, uh, public service announcement. They usually record that in January, February timeframe about the James River and the water quality and what we can do to, to do that. So, they all put, they all work in kind of groups of two or three to develop a public service announcement, talking about why, you know, the river's important and the ecological impacts of the river on our, on the environment and how we need to do, make good decisions regarding the water. Cause I said, Amherst County, every drop of rain that falls in Amherst County runs off into the James River. It's through the tributaries. All of our, you know, all of our runoff goes to the James. So, it's important for our students to realize that and be good stewards of the land here in, in the county. So, that, that's a good project. We're, we're glad to be going into year two of that. Again, it's all funded through a grant, all, all that is funded through the Noah BeWett Grant. And again, it's a, about $60,000, uh, that comes to us through that grant to cover, uh, professional development and to get the students on the river. Um, we do have the work session scheduled for July 28th. So, um, right now I have it started at 9:30 with Norm's. And Ms. Thompson, we probably need to talk offline about that a little bit and have that conversation. Um, so we have that in the morning. We have lunch and then, um, we will have, right now we're scheduled to look into the policy in the afternoon, um, and have those conversations on policy and any other items we might need to put on the agenda regarding that. And then at 4:30, right now we're scheduled, which is my next item, the, uh, joint board committee is scheduled for 4:30 and that's with the chair and vice chair, myself, Ms. McNerney. And on the county side, it'll be, uh, Mr. Rogers and Ms. Tucker, uh, and Mr. Wade, I believe, are going to be doing it from the county side. And we'll have that in here, is my understanding. Uh, we're developing the agenda. We have a general outline of the agenda now. I met with, uh, Mr. Rogers earlier this week and we have kind of working on the agenda. Uh, probably about an hour, I would think, looking at the agenda we have so far. And, and I'll talk with you about that and we can develop further agenda items if we need to. But we kind of have a draft of that now. But again, I can sit down with you next week and we can discuss it in further detail. Do you have any questions for me? That's all I have for you at this point. Other than glad to be here tonight.
We're glad to have you.
Thank you. So, no questions? Ms. Thompson, committee reports.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Um, I had a couple of things, but I wasn't sure who to direct it to. Um, I've been speaking with some teachers and I'd like to bring back, um, the teachers on it. And I didn't know if there was something we could do to help implement that.
We have it in the works.
It's in the works. Okay. And also they are requesting to have a committee put together to, um, look into possibly cutting down some of the steps that they have to take for their, um, like every year they go through their steps.
So, as far as the, the pay scale steps?
Yes, sir.
So, that's something we'd have to put a committee together with them and, and, uh, finance and human resources. But we can, we can discuss that and maybe pull something together on that. But it would, it, there'd be a process involved with that, but I'm not opposed, but that would be...
Okay.
Look at the financial implications of that as well as how that would work with through HR and through finance.
All right. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, thank you, Dr. Wells. And, uh, once again, welcome aboard and...
Thank you.
Looking forward to working with you. Um, board members, we have, uh, committee reports. Ms. Licken?
Uh, Lowell has not met since we met before. We would be meeting August.
Okay. Upcoming meeting in August. And, um, any VSBA report?
Just keeping up with the news.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Greiser's not here for, uh, Governor's School. Mr. Terry, STEM Academy.
So, we have met, uh, once, well, we've met twice. Uh, once was a joint meeting, uh, with, uh, their sponsors and the school board, I mean, and the, uh, STEM Academy Board. Uh, and then we had a board meeting and, um, we're looking forward to just yet another good year. Uh, the kids at the STEM Academy did a fabulous job this year and, um, it's always great to see their projects and what they got going on over there. It's, it's, it's a great program if, if kids can get to be a part of it. Uh, so, it's all good.
Thank you. Uh, items from individual board members. Uh, so, Mr. Terry, would you start us off?
Sure.
We'll work, work our way down.
Yep. So, um, I'd like to thank the, you know, presenter, Mr. Smith, for the insurance stuff. Uh, that's one of those subjects unless you know insurance, it kind of really baffles your mind. So, uh, but he, he did a pretty good job of just explaining what was, what was going to happen with that. Um, I'd like to welcome, well, the only ones that are left here tonight, uh, Dr. Hoden and, and Mr. Crawford. Uh, welcome aboard. Well, welcome to your new assignment, sir. Um, it's great to see people who have been in the county their entire time, putting in their entire service with Amherst County Public Schools. Uh, now that you're at the high school, we've got some big shoes to fill. Uh, there's others in the room who've done the same thing. So, good luck to you. Best of support. Um, Dr. Norman and, uh, Mr. Maddox, uh, for the, you know, the grading, thanks for listening to the school board. Uh, and thanks for taking back our, um, our concerns that we had last month and coming with a, a, uh, much more comfortable policy for us. Um, it wasn't an easy thing to work through, but you guys did a great job. So, thank you very much. And, uh, I really like the, uh, team Amherst approach. I think that's going to be a good thing for everybody, all the schools, uh, together, um, living that we're, we're one school organization. So, uh, look forward to it all. And, uh, like we said earlier, welcome aboard, Dr. Wells. Look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. Ms. Licken?
Well, I'm a ditto everything that Mr. Terry said. Uh, welcome to all the new, new old people. Well, uh, you know what I mean? People who have returned and people who have other positions. We're excited to have you here and, uh, just want to congratulate all of those people. And, uh, like you said, insurance stuff is kind of like, mm, but it was pretty, I did understand it this time. It took me about 20 years to get that straight, but I got it straight now. So, we just thank everybody for what they're doing. Just hope we can, 34 days, plane will take off one more time.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms. Berg?
Um, yes, I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Smith for his presentation on the insurance. It's always hard to grasp everything and I think he did a really good job in trying to hold her hand through that. And also, um, I'm glad to hear about the summer school being a big success. So, I wanted to give you a shout out and say thank you so much for everything you did. And, um, glad to hear everybody moving around, um, their new positions. Again, the new old people, thank you so much. And I'm really looking forward to this year and moving forward with the school and all our employees. We're all going to have your back. We're going to get through this. We're going to put COVID behind us, keep on moving forward. Um, and welcome aboard, Dr. Hoden. Excited to have you. And most of all, thank you so much, Dr. Wells.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I'm ecstatic that we have you and looking forward to the future with you.
Thank you.
Ms. Justice?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Wow, what a great evening welcoming, as everyone said, a lot of new people. And I am very excited to see this new school year. I'm excited by what we've accomplished. Um, I'm blown away by the power school. I'm very thankful for Dr. Norman, Dr. Wells and Mr. Gallagher answering our questions, which are numerous. Um, and being patient and helping us have a better understanding of what's going on. I'm excited about those new buses. It'll be fun. And the river program, that sounds really cool. So, I also wanted to, um, bring up a matter, um, for consideration by our board. Um, in light of some of the concerns that have been brought up regarding sexually explicit materials in, in libraries and stuff, I started to investigate and we have an exceptional policy for, um, use of technology, um, policy G A B. And, but we don't have any policy for print materials at all. And so, um, I started to meet with Dr. Wells and Dr. Norman and have had some really great discussions. And I'd just like to suggest that maybe at our work session that we put on the agenda, maybe if work wants to look at remedying that and getting a policy together for print materials similar to what we already have for our technology. Um, that would also help our teachers and our administration to help guide, um, in, in resources. If we don't have a policy, they, they have nothing to lean on, just their preferences or, you know. So, that's my thought.
May I piggyback off of, off of you? When Ms. Justice brought this, um, to my attention, um, I suggested that we meet with the staff for us to learn and understand what policies we have. And Dr. Wells, Dr. Norman, Dr. Arnold all met with us and sort of walked us through it. Um, and we learned that we do have a review process if there are questions about sexually explicit materials, but that we really don't have a policy on selections or maybe as thorough of a policy as we do as with technology. Um, so after that, um, Dr. Wells and Dr. Norman met with, um, Mrs. Justice and I. And I believe that, that you came up with some ideas and saw some, I'm not going to say holes in our policy, but maybe some ways to restructure some of our policy. I know our conversation, Dr. Norman had some really great ideas towards the end. So, didn't want to move forward without talking with you as a board on it because that was going to take them and their resources. We just sort of did some initial conversations, some initial looks, and they've done some initial thinking. So, our thought, if the board was, uh, open to this, that we would let them maybe present to us at our work session, some of their thoughts about where we are and what we might could potentially do. But didn't want to put that on them unless that was the board's pleasure. So, um, I think that it has great potential, um, to help us maybe solidify and just come up with a way that we can really communicate with parents, but also put, um, some things in place. So, what do you think, board? Should we move that to our work session? Would that be okay?
It'll be fine.
All right. I'm seeing nods. Okay, sounds good. And Ms. Justice, thank you for bringing that forward. And thank you, uh, Dr. Wells and Dr. Norman for working with us on that initially. So, we look forward to hearing more in, in July. Anything else, Ms. Justice?
I, everyone I talk to about Amherst County, I just say, I'm so thankful that I'm here. I'm so thankful for the people that work here. And Amherst, I, I believe Amherst has the potential to be a gold medal county in, in policy and in retention. You can already, already see that as far as retention with the number of homegrown people that stay here and come back here. So, I'm excited to be here.
Thank you. Mr. Rossi?
Yes, um, well, it's an exciting time. We're getting ready to start it up again and, well, we've got a new sheriff in town, looks like. We've got a few new sheriffs and I'm excited about that. Um, uh, I have, some people approach and they have some concerns. Um, I'm pretty sure our policy is pretty clear on cell phones and, uh, dress code. Uh, that's been brought up a couple of times and I don't know, uh, I'm pretty sure our policy's pretty clear on that. And enforcement is, you know, come out swinging and, and be strong, be stern, let them know it's changed and it's, it's time for it to happen. Um, but the, uh, the summer program, wow, they didn't have that. I might've done a little better. But, no, I'm excited to hear about that. And, and maybe it doesn't necessarily have to be a summer program. You know, maybe, maybe we can expand on that. Maybe we're, we're going to learn something from that. That's, that seems like it's a real exciting thing that happened. And I don't know, uh, how great it did yet, but I'm sure it's going to be impressive. I'm just, the energy around it seemed like everybody wanted it to succeed and, and wanting is half the battle. And, and thank you for, for taking that on and bringing it so far forward. It, that's some really good thinking. That's, that's way ahead of the curve. Very, very impressed. And, um, yeah, I'm excited with, with the new people in here. Um, I was new just a few months ago. So, it'll, it'll take me a little bit to learn everybody's names, but, uh, I'm, I'm excited, uh, to what's ahead. names, but I'm, I'm excited to what's ahead. And I don't think there's anything that's going to stop this crew and this school and this school district. I think there's only one way to go and that's forward. And I think we have a team in place that's going to win. And it's going to win for Amherst. And you, you all can make it happen, every one of you. You're all a part of it, and I think you're all moving in the right direction. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to be brief. I just want to say thank you to everybody for all your hard work and welcome to everybody that's new in your new positions or any of you that are new here with us. So thank you very much for giving us your time and your commitment, and we really do appreciate you. And I was really excited about our summer school Power Scholars, and I think there's a whole bunch of other names down there that's escape room and all that. But I was excited to hear that we had even more students this year than last year. So thank you all for your work on that. Excited about the progress with Medicaid. And Mr. Gallagher did a fantastic job with that teacher performance and turning that around very quickly. There's many, many other things I can thank you for, but I know we have a closed session in front of us. So I just want to say I look forward to seeing you all on the 28th. And in the meantime, we need a motion to go into closed session.
Make a motion to go into closed session. And I have something to read?
Yes, you do. I'm sorry.
Pursuant to section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia, it is recommended the board convene a closed meeting for the following, A1 Superintendent's Evaluation and 100-Day Plan.
Okay. I need a motion to go into closed session?
Motion to go into closed session.
I have a motion, need a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Rossy, all in favor?
Aye.
We're now in closed session.
Hi, I'm Anthony Whitehead with Next Gen Aviators by Dynamic Aviation. Next Gen Aviators is a three-hour interactive immersive experience designed to introduce kids to aviation and the career technical fields that are associated with it. It's designed to be inspirational, to give many of these, these students their first opportunity to explore aviation, to take flight. We introduce kids not just to the pilot, which is obviously what most people think of first, but also to the mechanic, to the engineer, to the electronics, avionics technician. And we do this by giving them this varied or broad experience in that three and a half hours. We're hoping that these kids learn something about themselves, about their own strengths or skills or interests. And from that, they are inspired to pursue those dreams. Somehow or another, associated with aviation is fantastic, but even if it's not, that's still a winner, a win for us and a win for them.